The mayor, the mayor, the meeting is recording.
I am here. Do you want to start with roll call or vote, please?
Councilmember Becerra?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Mendoza?
Do you want to contact her?
I'm here, I'm here, Daisy.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Penalosa?
Here.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Here.
Councilmember Solorio?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Viegas?
Here.
Mayor Pulido?
Here.
Thank you. We have a call.
Let me ask, we've done roll call vote, let me ask, do we want to hear from speakers first? Why don't we go ahead and do that?
Mayor, did you want to start?
Madam Clerk, if you can.
Mayor, did you want to start with Pledge of Allegiance and invocation?
Yeah, although what you've got here, you've got speakers right away. Yeah, let's do the, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody could please stand. Place your hand over your heart, right hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, is Bob Keller there, our police chaplain, to give us our vocation?
Yes.
So, I bow to him. Have a word prayer, shall we? Our Father in heaven, we thank you that we can all be here tonight. Pray that you would bless my prayer, and we certainly come in the mighty name of our Lord Jesus. We ask that you would bless the council meeting tonight and the many decisions that they make. Give the mayor and council members wisdom as they lead the city of Santa Ana. Bless them exceedingly and abundantly with your truth. Lord, protect us all from COVID-19. We ask also that you would bless our police department tonight. We ask that you would protect them and give them safety as they patrol the city of Santa Ana. Keep our officers safe from harm and protect them. We ask also that you would protect our chief, and we ask that you would give him wisdom along with the command staff. Lord, in closing, we ask for this blessing from Numbers, Chapter 6. The Lord bless thee, the Lord keep thee, the Lord make his face shine upon thee, and be gracious unto thee. The Lord lift up his countenance upon thee and give thee peace. For we ask in Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
Thank you. I now want to ask the city attorney, is there anything to report out of closed session, please?
Mayor, we do have reportable action this evening. We address three matters in closed session. The item of reportable action is the third item, which is the Santa Ana Needs Equity versus City of Santa Ana. The reportable action is that the city council has approved the First Amendment to a settlement agreement contingent on deleting Section 4 of that original agreement. And the city council will be asked to consider in open session a resolution as item number 55, which will be further revised when we get to that item. The motion to approve this was made by Mayor Pulido, seconded by Mayor Potem Juan Viegas. And the vote was four to approve, two noes. Councilmember Becerra, Councilmember Penalosa. I'd like to also announce that Councilmember Sarmiento recused himself out of an abundance of caution, although he does not have an actual conflict, when he was alleged to have one. And so, he did not participate in this decision. That's all the reportable action that I have.
Mayor, and if I may interject here, we do have a ceremonial presentation that could be presented by Councilmember Mendoza.
Please go ahead. If you could, Councilmember Mendoza, if you could make a presentation to Wingstop, please go ahead. Is Councilwoman Mendoza on the line?
Yes, she is.
Oh, here I am. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'm having just a little bit of technical difficulties with these buttons today. But I do want to thank the Wingstop for their community involvement, for their generosity and civic-mindedness in being so kind to our constituents. And I'd like to ask Daisy to assist me in doing the presentation, please. I misplaced my talking points. Would you do that for me, please?
Yeah, it'd be my pleasure. Recently, through the Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports Program, Romero Cruz Academy collected donations from the community to provide their students with resources during this global pandemic. As this public school serves a low-income community where the majority of students receive free and reduced breakfasts and lunches, the need for meal vouchers from local businesses were critical. Wingstop made a very generous donation to Romero Cruz Academy in the form of 500 meal certificates. This valuable donation supported the children of Romero Cruz Academy in an important and necessary way. Thank you to Wingstop for your kindness and your contributions to our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that presentation, Councilwoman Mendoza. Is there anything else you would like to add?
No, that, just our sincere appreciation from the city of Santa Ana in their generosity. And that I would like to present this award in person as soon as the COVID restrictions allow me to, because I want to extend that it is an honor to have businesses such as Wingstop in our community. So, I will be making the personal presentation in the near future. Thank you, Wingstop, and all your employees. And I am sure that corporate will be hearing about you and put you in high regard as you should have. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman. Now, let me go to the city clerk and ask if there are any public comments, please.
Yes, Mayor, we do have public comment. And before I unmute the callers that we have, I do want to report out that we did receive emails in addition. 19G, the comment, the Kennedy Commission supports the public engagement and process for item 25K was one Santa Ana resident that requested high-level update on case City of Santa Ana versus County of Orange. And then, that is, oh, and then, non-agenda, there were two Santa Ana residents that thanked council for holding off on moving forward with the new general plan. And with that caller with the last, or with the ID number, Zoom ID, Lisa Solomon, if you would please dial *6 or the microphone unmute feature on your device.
Hi, this is Lisa Solomon. I'm a resident of Santa Ana for over 20 years, but also I'm a principal of an elementary school. I want to start off by thanking city council members and Planning Commission for listening to the community in reference to the general plan. We appreciate you taking the time to listen and receive input from our community. Now, more than ever, we need to find creative ways to outreach, include sending surveys, Nixols, Zoom meetings, phone calls, surveying residents, and links on the website, so people have various venues to have their voices heard. I'm here really to address 19E, which is programs for our youth with the cannabis funds. I want to thank, first of all, the Santa Ana Zoo and our Santa Ana Public Library for the services that they've already provided for our students. Right after we closed, the zoo pivoted quickly and provided field trips for our students. So, even though they might not have been able to leave their homes, they were able to go on different adventures with the Santa Ana Zoo. I want to make sure that as we're deciding how the funds are spent, that we're considering how we can continue to provide virtual programs as the restrictions are many for our community, and we want to keep our children and our youth safe. As we look at providing bookmobile tech services and support services, please consider making the bookmobiles mobile hotspots as well. Please consider providing citywide Wi-Fi. I'm not giving up on that, because I do believe that there's a lot that we can do to help our residents, not just the youth, but all residents of Santa Ana. And help to improve the Wi-Fi mesh network, so we don't have any dead zones, as they are called. Also, look for creative ways to outreach, so more children can participate in youth programs and work together to support all youth of all ages. And we want to continue to collaborate with you as schools, as residents, to provide as much support as we can for our youth. And lastly, I just want to say thank you for all that you have done, city council, and through Santa Ana Cares, the testing that you provided, the great work of the city manager's office in getting all the information out, giving out masks and information about what services are provided, what support is offered to residents. Thank you for collaborating with other agencies. As you look at 75B, please continue to provide rental assistance and bill assistance to our community and our businesses. They are in much need of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 489. If you would please dial *6. Thank you. You may proceed.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I want to start off with an attitude of gratitude. Thank you to the three council members who will be going on, and also to the mayor. I know it's not an easy job to be in the council, despite what some people think. And so, I know that your families made sacrifices and you've made sacrifices. And I just want to thank you, and especially Mayor, for all the years. It's going to be different without you there at the council meeting. I also want to add that I do support Councilmember Mendoza's position about reviewing the status of the city attorney. I agree with her, this isn't a personal, this is strictly business. But the city pays a premium, because she's not an employee of the city. She's an employee of a lawyer's firm, and there's a premium that we pay for that. Now, the new council may take a look and agree that's the best way to handle it. But I think it really needs to take a look and realize what we're paying for. And also be concerned about conflict of interest, because her lawyer firm does represent the city on a number of issues. And have her as city attorney, to me, always could be a good, could be a conflict of interest. So, as the new year comes, please take this stuff as an issue, and just so that you realize what's there. And again, this is personal. I think Sonya's done a great job for the city. This is strictly business. So, thank you, and good evening.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 010. If you would please dial *6 to unmute your call, or select the microphone icon. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, Victor Mendoza. Again, I do want to also relay my thanks to the outgoing members of the council, Mayor Pulido, for his service. I know at times it's a very difficult job, but again, thank you and all that you contributed to the city over the years. Today, you're looking at about $6 million of council-rated related decisions, I wish to comment on it, Mike. First, I want to comment on small business opportunities. Last meeting, there was some discussion about how better to engage our local businesses in contracting opportunities to the city. When I looked into this, I found that the city website had not been updated on bid for about two years. I did call Councilwoman Becerra, and it looked like there's been some removal about that dated information. And there is now a link to a planet bid, I think that might be helpful in the future. With respect to item number 25E, an amount of $450,000, 25G, an amount of $900,000, 25I, an amount of $1,020,000. About $2 million being authorized today, all on sole source extension. Not one dime of this will stay locally, when businesses are suffering and people are unemployed and fighting to keep their roof over their head and food on the table. Maybe updating the bid system can help, since it's a point for local businesses. But that point system, like the prior information, seems like it was outdated. With respect to 20A, an amount of $1,575,000, here's another $1.5 million being added to the AMS budget. In fact, there's not even a document that presents the total cost of ownership that we, the ratepayers, will pay. So, it leaves the question, where is this all going? And is there going to be some type of accountability built into this project that hasn't yet, we have yet to see what the benefit is to the ratepayer? Also, this is really an approval for a PO, for some hardware that's not necessary at this time. So, why don't we ask the staff to send up the new bids instead of feeding the current system, where local businesses and residents are getting goose egg? Just give it a shot and see what happens. 11A, the sale of bicycle and bicycle parts ordinance. My comment to that would be, why not issue bike licenses to residents? There is nothing in the city website about this, however, there are licenses issued for dogs. I think our children's bikes should have a little priority over dogs. The bike registration program would raise awareness about bike safety and protection. It provides tracking mechanisms for stolen bikes. And bike thieves know their actions are being controlled, and more importantly, provide a vehicle to promote community relations. It can start immediately without any further direction. The Third and Broadway project, I do support this project, but I want to convey a couple of points.
15 seconds left.
First of all, what's that?
I'm sorry, you have 15, you have 15 seconds left.
Okay, okay. Well, on the Third and Broadway project, you know, you didn't bother to mention that we're losing about $600,000 per year. And that needs to be somehow considered down the road. And also, you're going to carry the risk of the demolition of the parking garage as you carry forward. So, let's be very cautious and very communicative about that hazard exposure that's in the garage today.
Thank you, your time is up.
Likewise, with the litigation on 25K, let's oversee that and make sure that...
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 837. Please dial *6 to unmute your call, or select the microphone icon on your device. Caller with the last three numbers, 837. Please dial *6.
Hello?
Hi, you may proceed.
Hello. Good evening. This is, my name's Oscar Gonzalez. And I'd like to thank the Honorable Mayor Pulido, the Honorable Mayor Potem Viegas, and the Honorable Members of the City Council. You know, our family has been serving the Santa Ana market for over 27 years. And we really appreciate the opportunity to present a project that is very dear and dear to our hearts. And want to thank you for the service to the community. We also express our sincere thanks to our city staff for guiding this project through multiple submissions and refinements to make it a top-quality development.
I'm sorry, Oscar, are you looking to speak on a public hearing item?
That's correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to go ahead and put you back on hold. And when the mayor opens a public hearing item, then you may proceed at that time. My apologies.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Caller with the last three numbers, 361. Please dial *6 to unmute your call, or select the microphone on your device. Thank you. You may proceed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you may speak on any item on the agenda or non-agenda, with the exception of public hearing items. You may proceed.
Correct. This is John Hannah, speaking for the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. Want to commend the council for delaying the decision on the general plan, to provide more input. And hopefully, we'll be considering the workforce when we look at that issue. But I also wanted to thank Mayor Pulido, Councilmember Solorio, and Councilmember Viegas for their service to the city of Santa Ana. Councilman Solorio, I served with you on the Rancho Board. And I know you have brought a lot of insight, both to the college district as well as to the city, from what you've learned in the city and also in the State Assembly. Thank you for your service. And Mayor Pulido, I've known you many years. It's been a long time since you, the days of Ace Muffler and the fight over billboards. And I just, we may have had some differences lately, but I think you've worked so hard to be a good mayor. And I know that you and I shared a deep friendship with the late Frank Barbero. And I know he'll be looking down and wishing you all the best in the future. So, thank you. And that's it.
Thank you.
Let me just intervene and say thank you for that, John. I much appreciate those kind words. Thank you.
Caller with the last three numbers, 971. Please dial *6 to unmute your call, or select the microphone. Thank you. You may proceed.
Well, Mayor Pulido, once again, hello?
Yes, you may proceed.
Yes. Well, Mayor Pulido, again, you're not supposed to vote on 55A, but obviously, you're going to do what you're going to do anyway. Mayor Potem Viegas, I would think the law and order type of thing would be not to dole out favors to try to avoid embarrassing information. But I guess I can't convince you of that if you're not convinced at this point. We do have a little bit of optimism in the integrity and justice sort of not being lost of all meaning in that Mayor-elect saw fit that there was a problem with even the way it looks. And if Mayor Pulido can't understand how, that not only is there a problem with how it looks, but that there's a problem with, that now, again, he is trying to push through a deal that the developer is driving for their own benefit at the expense of the city and the taxpayers. There's no procedure for doing this. It's a final action. You have apparently adopted an amendment to a secret settlement that the public doesn't even know about. That material is conditioned on approval of a rescission that makes findings in favor of things that are not in front of the council. How is it not obvious to everybody that this is yet another ploy that will harm the city and harm its taxpayers? Don't fall for it. Have a seat at the table for the people who successfully challenged this and reach a resolution. Don't try to ice them out of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 15, I'm sorry, 340. Please dial *6 to unmute your call, or select the microphone icon on your device.
Hello, good evening. This is Irma Hauri. Good evening, Mayor Pulido and council members. On behalf of Wilshire Square and myself, for the many years we thank you of support to our community, to all the council members, we worked hard on many issues, disagreed on a few. But all in all, we work together for the betterment of our city. There's many things I could say over the years we've worked, but I wish you well. I wish you joy. I wish you health. And I'm looking forward to working with the next mayor, Sarmiento Felicidades, and all the council. Thank you again from the bottom of my heart, and wishing you a fabulous holiday. Irma Hauri. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Irma. Thank you. Please go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Zoom ID, I listed as Dave. If you would please dial *6 or the microphone icon to unmute your call. Zoom ID, Dave, if you would please select the microphone icon on your device to unmute your call. Thank you. Dave, you may proceed. Zoom ID, Dave, you've successfully unmuted your call. You may proceed to speak.
This is for later on, comment on 75C. So, I'll call back later.
Thank you. Yes, we'll put you on hold for 75C. Thank you. Zoom ID, Joaquín Avalos. If you would please select the microphone unmute feature on your device. Joaquín Avalos. If you would please select the microphone unmute feature on your device. Zoom ID, Susana Sandoval. Please dial, select the unmute microphone feature on your device.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Is that correct?
That is correct. You may proceed.
This is Susana Sandoval, and I represent the Madison Park Neighborhood Green Program as the Chair for the Advisory Board, and I'm also co-chair with Irma Hauri on the Santa Ana Helping Neighborhoods Alliance, and I'm a proud resident in Wilshire Square. Mr. Mayor Pulido and esteemed city council members, we wish to thank you for your years of service and dedication, particularly during very difficult and challenging times. We are particularly happy that the commissioners you appointed on the Planning Commission voted to not approve the general plan at this time. The commissioners heard the voices of the community that more outreach to residents needs to take place, and their input is key to a comprehensive general plan that represents accountability with state regulations and can be successful, particularly as it pertains to environmental justice and city development. We look forward to our continued collaboration with the city on the evolving general plan that will stimulate our city of Santana and its residents to thrive. We wish you continued success as you pursue your endeavors and work. Muchísimas gracias for your years of service and contribution and late nights. Happy holidays, Feliz Navidad, on behalf of the organizations that I represent and a proud resident of Santana. Gracias.
Thank you. Zoom ID, Carl Benninger. Please select the microphone unmute feature on your device. My apologies, I believe you've already spoken. You're logged in twice into the device.
Yes, Daisy, that is correct. I've already spoke. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that's all the callers we have at this time for agenda and non-agenda items. All the other callers we have are for public hearing items.
Okay, thank you for that, then. So, let's now go on to consent calendar. And council members, is there anything, anybody wants to poll on items for the consent calendar? I want to poll 55A, because I know the city clerk is going, I mean, the city attorney's going to have to clarify the motion there. But any other items that council members want to poll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you can pull item 11A, and I will be an abstention on item 55A, based upon the perceived conflict of interest that was mentioned earlier. I did receive a campaign contribution in 2016 from the applicant. I know much time has already since passed, but out of an abundance of caution, I'll be abstaining on that item.
Thank you for that. Any other items from council members that you wish to poll or abstain?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Penalosa.
Please go ahead, Councilman Penalosa. Go ahead.
Item 19E.
19E is an Edward. You got it?
Yes.
Any other items, council members? And Madam Clerk, on item 19E, out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to abstain. It has to do with cannabis, and I've... It has to do with cannabis and I've considered, I mean, I've voted on any cannabis items for years now, so I'll abstain on that. If there are no other items, let's, is there a motion on the balance of the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the balance.
Second, Becerra.
Thank you to the motion. Thank you to Councilmember Becerra for the second. Madam Clerk, why don't we call a roll call on the balance of the consent calendar, please?
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Penialosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio? Thank you. Mayor Protem Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Polito?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
So then, what would our next item be, Madam Clerk? Would it be 19E from Councilmember Penialosa?
11A from Councilmember Sarmiento.
Okay. Go ahead, please, Councilmember Sarmiento.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I simply wanted to thank the staff, and specifically, the city attorney staff, for going back and redrafting the ordinance in the way it reads. I believe there was some questions that were made at the last council meeting when it was first presented, and I think those have been incorporated in this ordinance. My intent of, you know, amending what was presented to us originally was to make sure that we don't criminalize lawful behavior. And I believe the description is a lot tighter, it's more narrowly tailored, and will not do that. The other one was to make sure that this is presented as a wobbler, to make sure that an infraction will be considered when these incidents occur. And to the extent that there is some discretion on behalf of the city attorney when something is filed, there would be multiple incidents that would trigger that filing of a misdemeanor. That, I know, is something that we are trying to prevent, the underlying act by bad actors, but we also don't want to cast too wide a net where, you know, innocent people are subject to misdemeanors that would have to be, that stay on people's records. So, based upon that, I will go ahead and, with those changes, move the item.
Is there a second to Councilmember Sarmiento's motion?
Yes, Becerra, second.
Thank you for that. Any other comment? If not, roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Penialosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Polito?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
So I believe now we're on 19E with Councilmember Penialosa?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Please, Councilmember, go ahead.
19E is to receive and file Cannabis Public Benefit Fund for Youth Services informational update. I just wanted to thank the various departments involved for putting this update together. There's a lot of good things that we've been doing with the cannabis funds, and especially now during the COVID-19 pandemic that had been put to good use. Everything from, you know, about 350 additional wireless hotspots that we were able to acquire with these funds. I know that many of our residents do not have access to Internet, so that's an important item that we're able to secure, along with the Bookmobiles, Bookmobile, and the year-round aquatics program. The only reason I pulled in, I should have clarified with this Madam City Manager earlier, but with the aquatics program, I know that over the last, you know, eight months, it's been modified a bit, the schedule has, because of the pandemic. And I wanted to ask, was the initial 600,000 that was given a Blu-ray manage, management aquatic program, is there, are they, is it working? Are they going to be crediting us for that lost time moving forward? Is that a payment that we fully made to them and is now lost? How does that work?
Thank you, Councilmember. I will ask our Parks and Rec Director, Lisa Rudolph, to come up and speak at how their contract is being modified to deal with all the issues and challenges that we have had.
And if I may, I want to ask Mayor Protem, even though it's a little different because, you know, we're zooming in or whatever, but can you just take over this item, please? Because I'm abstaining. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir, I got it.
Thank you, Councilmember Penialosa. We did have modified aquatic programming, so the contract is 160,000, and so they have utilized everything. And so, we will continue this next year. They're continuing this winter with appropriate aquatic programs, and we just had to modify significantly, but we did it in ways where the public could have use of the pool, lanes. A family can go into a lane line and utilize the pool. So we just needed to add more staff and more lifeguards, and so we did utilize the entire contract amount.
Okay, so the full amount is being used with the, okay.
Yes.
All right. I just want a clarification on that. Again, thank you to your department, as well as the library and other departments involved. There's a lot of good things that we're doing, could definitely do more. I know I've been speaking with some of the staff about adding additional power program, and in our city, there's sites available that we could possibly use. So, in the future, you know, if we're able to identify funds that we could use to service other areas of our community versus just the one area, that's always great. So with that said, I'll move the item for approval. Thank you.
Is there any other councilmember comments?
Yes, a second then. I wanted to get what Councilmember Penialosa said across the board, and I wanted to thank staff for the report together and giving these things a motion. As you know, I feel very strong that we try to get out as many of these youth funds out there as soon as possible, especially to help with our kids' educations. But I know that staff's making great strides, and I'm thankful that the council is still committed to this program. It's been almost four years, Councilmember Vegas, when we set, you know, the wheels of this youth fund in motion, so I'm pleased that we're getting these new dollars out the door. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solorio. Is there any other councilmember comments? If not, I'm not hearing any. I would like to also thank Councilmember Solorio. Yes, I remember back when we were in the public safety, about four years ago, Public Safety Committee, we're the ones that set the groundwork for this, came out of committee and then came over to the council. And it was the previous council prior to this that passed this, you know, DiNajero, Martinez, Benavides, all good friends. I was very happy for the council to vote on this, to make this happen, for these funds to be here. And is there a second on this item? If not, I'll go ahead and second. And, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Penialosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Vegas?
Yes.
Motion carries 7.
Next item, Madam Clerk, and I think the mayor comes back.
55A, pulled by Mayor Polito.
Okay, yes, I pulled this item. What I would like to do is first recognize and acknowledge that Councilmember Sarmiento is abstaining on this item. He already stated his reasons earlier, but if you would please just note that for the record again, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
And then I would, we had discussion in closed session, and as we move forward and discuss it now, I'd like to call in the city attorney to articulate the motions that were discussed, and then I'll ask for a maker of the motion a second. We'll discuss it, and we'll go from there. So, Madam, city attorney, please.
Mayor and councilmembers, the item before you is a request from the applicant to rescind what we are calling 2019 approvals for a development project. In closed session this evening, the city council approved a First Amendment to a previous settlement agreement, but they made that approval explicitly contingent upon deleting Section 4 of the original agreement, which pertained to a defense and indemnity obligation of the applicant. Now, we ask you to consider the adoption of this resolution, but we ask that you revise two sections. One, to include a new subsection C to section 2, so that it's absolutely clear that this is contingent on executing that proposed First Amendment that deletes section 4, as you previously approved in closed session. So the two sections that would be amended are on page 2 of the resolution. Under section 2, you would add a new subsection C that would read, "Notwithstanding anything set forth herein to the contrary, or anything set forth in any documents or agreements adopted and executed before the action taken by adoption of this resolution, the obligations of the 2019 approvals requiring the applicant to defend and indemnify the city shall remain in effect, as if the 2019 approvals were not rescinded." But key to this action would actually be some amendments to section 4. This section is the section that talks to when the resolution would take effect. The amendment here would say that the resolution shall only take effect if the First Amendment to the settlement agreement is fully executed by both the city and the applicant. And with those changes, I'd recommend adoption of this resolution as set forth in the staff report.
Okay, is there a motion or a maker of a motion on what the city attorney just articulated?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Becerra. I have a question of the city attorney.
Okay, go ahead and ask.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to ask, Sonia, has the applicant so far lived up to their obligation when it comes to indemnifying the city?
The applicant so far is required to indemnify us by cooperating with legal counsel, which they have done. They do have a responsibility to pay some of the city's legal expenses, and those invoices have been sent to them. They have paid the invoices that were presented to them. We had some processing issues among our department and the planning and building department, which were resolved about two weeks ago, and they have been forwarded to the developer. Developer has told us that they intend to pay those invoices.
So they have not been paid yet?
They have not been paid yet.
Okay. I will not be supporting the rescission of this tonight. And my concern is that we, at the city, when we approve discretionary actions, we have standard boilerplate language when it comes to indemnification. And while I appreciate the efforts of both councils, both, you know, Sonia and folks on the other side of this issue, and my colleagues for their attempts to try to get us to a point where the city is truly protected, I do not believe that we really are there. I believe we might need more time. I don't know if my colleagues would be open to that. And unless they are open to that, I think any motion to rescind, I will be a no. Thank you.
Mayor, this is Mayor Protem Vegas. I make a motion to approve.
Please, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I still had a comment.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Is there a second? I think I heard a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Polito. Go ahead, Councilmember Penialosa, please, and then we'll take more comment. Go ahead, Councilmember Penialosa.
I just wanted to ask the city attorney, Madam City Attorney, if any new litigation comes out and arises out of this, anything to do with this project, or these approvals, or the rescission of these approvals, is the developer going to identify the city from new litigation that were to arise from this?
With the recommendation and the contingency that you added with respect to the deletion of section 4, the defense and indemnity requirements would be exactly as they existed when you first approved the project. They would be those boilerplate provisions that Councilmember Becerra referenced. So to the extent that we have litigation related to that project under that original language, that's the language we use in every one of our approvals, they would be required to do so. If there's any litigation that comes out as a result of, like, the PRA request, or conflicts of interest, or things of that nature, they would not be required to defend and indemnify. That would be on the city.
Okay. I just have issues with this because, I mean, we've been going on for this for months, and every time that we continue it, you know, the developer offers something more. And I know that this isn't going to go away, even with rescinding these approvals, and it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate that the city will still end up losing. I, you know, was vested to protect the public person, protect the city's interests, and I don't feel comfortable supporting a settlement that comes in last minute, you know, at 10 o'clock at night last night, the day before the council meeting. I think we need more time to go over the settlement and go over the issues and how they arrived to that settlement, because there was never any negotiation between me and the developer, or anybody on this council, I would think. And it's just, you know, we're now clearly operating to protect the self-interest of one person, and it's unfortunate. So, I cannot support this tonight, but I will make a substitute motion to deny the rescission, the staff recommendation.
I'll go ahead and second that. Becerra.
All right, let's do a roll call vote on the substitute motion, and if it fails, then we'll go back to the original motion that was already on the table, made by Mayor Protem Vegas, and seconded by Councilmember Mendoza. So right now, we're voting on the substitute motion, which is contrary to the original motion. Roll call vote, please, on the substitute motion.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
No.
Councilmember Penialosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
No.
Mayor Protem Vegas?
No.
Mayor Polito?
No. Now, let's do a roll call vote, please, on the original motion, unless there's additional comments. If there's no additional comment, let's do a roll call vote on the original motion. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Councilmember Solorio, go ahead, please.
For me, what's real important is this, is, you know, we heard from our city attorney recommending this. I'm, you know, largely, you know, going to, you know, rely how I vote based on that. But I'd be interested in hearing what our city manager's recommendation is on this as well.
Certainly, Mayor, if I may. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers.
Sure, go ahead.
This item has been before you four times before. This is the fifth time. Each time that concerns have been addressed, the city attorney has skillfully negotiated those items. At this point, the item that's before you and with your changes, it does hold the developer totally responsible for indemnification, just as it would any developer. So all of the asks have been met by the city attorney, and I have been recommending the rescission even the last four times. So my recommendation hasn't changed. I recommend that the council adopt the resolution and rescind the project approvals.
Thank you, Madam City Manager.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Anybody who hasn't spoken?
I just want to thank, I would like to thank the city attorney.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank our city attorney and our city manager for their hard work on this. And I know this thing has been coming back and forth, and, you know, at some point in time, you got to take a stand, and so, thank you very much for your dedication on this.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Penialosa, and I wanted to also thank the city manager and the city attorney. You know, the four times ago when this was first before us, your recommended action was to rescind, and unfortunately, that left us on the hook for over half a million dollars in legal fees, and it would have left us on the hook because you released the developer identification. So, it's unfortunate that that was a recommended action originally, and every time that we said no, the developer offered something else. First, it was $50,000, then $100,000, and now we're at full indemnification according to the latest recommended action. This should have been the original recommended action, so it's unfortunate that it took this long, and it took four times to going back. And so, I don't know who we're looking out for here. If the original recommended action was to rescind this with no protection to the city, why was that it, Madam City Manager?
Councilmember, I choose not to discuss litigation strategy in a public session, but we did have our reasons, and they were revealed to you in closed session, so that's all I can comment at this time.
With the strategies, we need to work on the strategy moving forward.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
We just need to work on that strategy moving forward.
And I believe our strategy has been, you know, we have been working on it very well in closed session. It is true that we shouldn't discuss what, you know, are, you know, how we're going to go about these legal matters. And, you know, I want to thank them for their hard work, and it's tough. This, you know, I can't comment any further, but, you know-
All right, with that, roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Basara?
Just briefly. Briefly, Mayor Pulido?
Oh, please, Councilor Mendoza, go ahead, please.
Just briefly. I understand that it's taken this long, but it is understandably because we as a council want to protect the public. So it is reasonable to have this kind of discussion, and it's healthy for us to have that. However, with today, with the contingency to remove Item 4, this is indeed the best possible protection that we can offer the public. There is not here any public for any interest for any one person or any one organization. This is protecting the residents' money and our constituents. So I'm comfortable with the contingent that we have added to the amendment today. So I am supporting this motion.
Thank you. With that, roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Basara?
Nope.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Benialosa?
No.
Councilmember Sarmiento? I'm sorry, he's abstained.
He's abstaining.
Yes. Councilmember Solario?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-2.
Okay, what's our next item, Madam Clerk?
75, Public Hearing, Item 75A.
Okay, so this is time and place for the public hearing on Item 75A. I will now open up the public hearing, but maybe let's first, do we want to do a staff presentation, and then we'll take public comment? Is there a brief presentation from staff?
Yes, Mayor. This item is simply to authorize the submission of the fiscal year 2019 consolidated annual performance and evaluation report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development from our Community Development Agency. The appropriate legal notices were all published, and the recommended action is to authorize the submission.
Thank you for that. As part of the open public hearing, are there any members of the audience that wish to address the council?
We may have one, Mayor. If I can unmute the call and see-
Go ahead and ask them, and if it's appropriate, we'll listen to them, and if it's another item, we'll just wait. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 361, please dial *6 to unmute your call, or select the microphone to unmute your device. And let us know if you would like to speak on Public Hearing, Item 75A. Caller, you have successfully unmuted yourself. If you would please identify if you want to speak on Item 75A. Okay, Mayor, that call was dropped. It looks like they hung up.
All right, well, look, if they dropped, we can't do anything about it. Let's bring it back to, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to bring it back to council for consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
Councilor Mendoza, was that you?
That was me, yes, I seconded.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Roll call vote, if there's no additional comment.
Yes, Mayor, and I failed to note the fact that we did receive an email for 75A from the Kennedy Commission urging priorities on affordable housing.
Okay, let's make sure that gets included into the public record.
Yes.
Go ahead, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Basara?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Benialosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solario?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries 70.
Thank you. Now, we're on Item 75B. This is time and place to open up a public hearing, adopting a Second Amendment to the COVID-19 Response Funding Plan. Is there anything that staff would like to present on this item? And then I'll listen for public comment, and we'll bring it back to council. Anything from staff on this item?
Certainly, Mayor. This item before you is actually to do four different actions, all recommended. The first action is to adopt the Second Amendment to the COVID Response Funding Plan for the allocation, administration, and implementation of federal funding, which we are being provided in response to COVID-19 pandemic in the amount of $3.5 million. The second action is to direct the city attorney to finalize and to authorize the city manager to enter into the negotiations and execute the necessary agreements. The third action is to approve a substantial amendment to the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan in order to allocate and program the $3.5 million of Community Development Block Grant and Emergency Solution Grant funding. And the final action that's before you for consideration is approval of the necessary appropriation adjustments to recognize the allocation of the additional funds and to program them to the expenditure account.
Thank you for that. Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public that wish to address this on this item?
I have two that are not identified. If I can unmute their call and-
Try them, try them.
Zoom ID Carla Juarez. Please select the microphone icon on your device to unmute yourself, and indicate if you want to speak on Public Hearing, Item 75B. Carla Juarez, Zoom ID. Please select the microphone on your device to unmute your call, and indicate if you want Zoom ID Michael McCann. If you would please select the microphone icon to unmute your call on your device. Zoom ID Michael McCann. If you would please select the microphone icon on your device to unmute your call. Okay, Mayor, that is all we have.
Okay, so let me close the public, close the public hearing, but I want to ask you, is there any written communications, any emails, anything?
We did receive one. The Kennedy Commission also urged priorities for affordable housing.
All right, so let's include that in the record. Any comments, questions from councilmembers? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Sarmiento?
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Just a quick question for staff, and I know that all the activities here that are listed are obviously ones that are worthy, are important. But I wanted to make sure, and just for the record, and I understand that there could be some flexibility moving forward in the event that one of the line items isn't exhausted, and maybe there is a need to support or buttress maybe one of the others. Most importantly, speaking about the emergency rental relief, that may be a priority for us, or maybe something that could be exhausted fairly quickly, and to the extent maybe some of the other items that are listed may not be exhausted. Could we draw down on some of the others if maybe there are some non-exhausted funds in those that we might be able to use for the subsistence payments?
Thank you, Councilmember, for that question. Yes, we have learned as we program the money in response to the pandemic, some of our programs have been more popular than other programs. So like the other funding that we have done, with this, we do have, the plan can be subject to adjustment as needed in shifting the needs and priorities, so long as the amount of funds does not exceed the total amount available. We may move funds from one eligible activity to another.
Great. And in the event, and this is probably very remote, that these funding sources are not exhausted, would they be carried forward to subsequent fiscal year? And how would they, they would be restricted to just coronavirus efforts, right? They couldn't be used for other CBPG purposes that we've used in the past?
My understanding is they are restricted because they are additional dollars in response to COVID-19. I don't know the answer as far as the carry forward, so I'm going to ask our double-duty gentleman, who's also acting Assistant City Manager and still Community Development Director, to answer the question on carryover.
And it's probably unlikely that we'll get there, because if anything, these funds will be exhausted sooner than we expect, in the remote event that there is any surplus.
Yes, sir, that is highly likely. These funds are good for three years. So you have three years to draw down these funds and use them, so we'll have some flexibility within that three-year period.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question, Councilor Sarmiento. It's an excellent question, because unfortunately, COVID is going to be around, and there might not be a lot of money to use, and if any of this is left over, I'm sure council will be able to put it to good use. So thank you for that. Any other questions? If not, I think a motion would be in order.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call vote, if there's no other questions. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Basara?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Benialosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solario?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries 70.
On Item 75C and 75D, I have potential conflicts due to campaign contributions. Even though I'm going off the council, I still believe I'm just going to, out of an abundance of caution, not participate. So Mayor Protem Viegas, I'll turn Item 75C and 75D over to you at this time, please.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
And Mayor Protem, I will also be recusing myself, because I am within proximity of a family-owned property to the applicant's site. So I will be recusing myself for that basis as well.
Very good, Councilmember Sarmiento. So I'm going to move over 75C. This is a time and place to open a public hearing. Appeal application number 2020-02, appealing the decision of the Planning Commission to approve an addendum to the Transit Zoning Code Environmental Impact Report for the Forest Street and Mortimer Mixed Use Project. And let's see here, do we have any speakers on that, Madam Clerk?
We do, Mayor Protem. And also, before I unmute the callers, I do want to announce that we did receive emails. We received five in support from Santa Ana resident business owners, one Red Oak investment in response to the appeal, and one in opposition from the Kennedy Commission.
Let's go ahead and go with the speakers.
Okay. Last three numbers, 994. Please dial *6 to unmute your call if you want to speak on Public Hearing Item. Thank you, you may proceed to speak.
This is Item 75C, Mortimer and Fourth Street.
Yes, this is 75C, Fourth and Mortimer.
Okay, I'm sorry. It was sounding some technical problems. This is Dave L., President, CEO of Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for your continued work on a lot of our development projects. I just want to speak on behalf of endorsing and supporting this project. We think that this is a strong economic development project for our city, giving us additional residential capacity as well as retail for businesses, and that we feel that this is a, be a great enhancement to our downtown area again. And what a great partner to have Northgate Gonzales Markets, who has a number of markets and have been involved with our city for a zillion years to partner with this. So I just wanted to say that we're supportive of this project. We hope that you will support it as well and get it approved tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 278. Please dial *6 to unmute your call, or select the microphone icon on your device if you would like to speak on Item Public Hearing. Thank you. Caller, you may proceed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you may proceed.
Okay. Honorable Mayor Miguel Pulido, Honorable Mayor Protem Juan Viegas, and members of the city council, good evening. My name is Teresa Saldivar, owner of Teresa's Jewelers. I'm calling in tonight to express my strong and complete support for the mixed-use development at Fourth and Mortimer in our historic downtown Santana. I am speaking to you as a businesswoman with half a century of working experience in the commercial heart of our city. I am convinced that this well-planned development will not only help downtown businesses, but will also be beneficial to our city. We need to stimulate investment, grow small business, create jobs, and build housing to strengthen our downtown. It is consistent with our vision for the downtown commercial district, attracting much-needed jobs and generating foot traffic that will benefit business as a whole, not to mention the fact that it will give the subject property a badly needed facelift, and will finally use a long vacant parcel of land to the benefit of the community. In light of the current pandemic that we are all confronting, the proposal before you will also bring opportunity for economic development in a challenging and difficult environment. The stimulus of this project will become increasingly evident in post-pandemic economy. Most importantly, this is a thoughtful and promising development. The developers have roots as well as a great reputation in Santana. The Northgate Gonzales name is synonymous with excellent business practices, community involvement, and concern for others. They are experienced entrepreneurs whom I have known and admired since they first opened their market here in the early 1990s. Some of their employees are my faithful customers, and it is always refreshing to hear them speak so highly of the company they work for. This project will be good for our downtown businesses and our great city. Thank you, and I urge your approval for this project.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 602. Please dial *6 to unmute your call, or select the microphone icon on your device.
Hello?
Thank you, you may proceed.
Hi, my name is Andre Robertson, and I'm the Executive Director for Power One Foundation. And I'm calling on behalf of this project to show my support for this project. Northgate Gonzales Marcus has partnered with my foundation in what I've done in the city of Santa Ana, as far as being there for the people in the community during a time, dealing with the hunger crisis that we've dealt with. A lot of the families have been impacted by COVID-19. And through the partnership with Northgate Marcus, them donating one of their stores to me that will be a potential, that will be a future, Northgate Marcus, they donated 30,000 square feet to our nonprofit. To date, with their assistance in Santa Ana alone, we've been able to feed over a million families in Orange County, and primarily Santa Ana. So with the support that they show the community in this mixed-use development will add value to the community, because what they stand for as a family and as a business, and also with their employees and so many people in the community that adore them and support that business, and from personal experience, being from Santa Ana, born and raised, and knowing what Northgate Marcus, and then taking the time to see our vision and what we're doing- And from personal experience, being from Santa Ana, born and raised, and knowing what Northgate Marcus and then taking the time to see our vision and what we're doing for the community of Santa Ana has really been a blessing. So I really am in support of this project on behalf of Northgate Marcus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the last three numbers, 404. Please dial *6 to unmute your call.
Hi, my name is Ryan Chase. I'm a fourth-generation business and property owner in the downtown. My family's been there since 1919. I'm calling tonight to support for the project. The project would heavily benefit the downtown and the sunny businesses and create welcoming and beautiful entry into the downtown area. In addition, it's a high-quality project adjacent to one of these streetcar stops and offering multiple unit options from one bedroom all the way... Or studio, excuse me, all the way up to four bedroom. And more importantly, and really, I mean, as the previous caller mentioned, the ownership group behind the project, Gonzalez Family, is a longtime business owner, stakeholder of the city, and is heavily, heavily involved in the community. There's so many great things, couldn't think of a better family behind the project. And they're also building a four-world project along with this project as well. So that'll be great. In addition, the project will not displace any residents, and all the employees are relocated to a new larger store nearby that can accommodate the traffic. Again, I could not personally think of a better use for the site and a better family to be involved. And for those reasons, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 155. If you would please dial *6 to unmute your call.
Mayor Pulido, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the Fourth and Mortimer Project. My name is Michael McCann, and I represent Toll Brothers, who owns the property bounded by Fourth, Main, Fifth, and Bush Streets. That is a 218-unit apartment project that Toll expects to start construction on, hopefully, late Q1 of 2021, maybe early Q2 2021. Toll believes the Fourth and Mortimer Project should receive the council's full support as it furthers the intent and vision of the Transit Zoning Code by bringing much-needed residential to a downtown area that is missing that key element of housing. The housing will help energize the downtown, support local businesses, increase safety with 24/7 eyes on the street, and add to the city's housing stock, which is probably most important of all. Contrary to what some might think, Toll is not concerned about a competing housing project down the street. Rather, we instead feel that multiple housing projects complement one another. They'll bring an energy and a sense of place to the downtown area that benefits all downtown constituents, particularly the businesses and even our project. For those reasons, we very much hope you will support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 841. Please dial *6 to unmute your call or select the microphone icon.
Good evening. My name is Sammy... Hello, good evening. My name is Sammy Carmona. I am a 32-year resident of the beautiful city of Santa Ana. I lived over on Burge and Camille behind Santa Ana High School, currently in 10th and Holly by S.A. And I think building a new development there on Fourth Street would be a great benefit for us all, including our millennials like myself. When it's hard to buy a house, you know, affordable housing comes into play. And then why not a better place than Fourth Street? You know, I grew up on that street. I watched Lion King on that theater. So I think it's a great, great idea for this development. And I would like to say that Northgate has always been a provider for Santa Ana with all their stores. And I can't wait for the new development to come into play. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID Carla Juarez. If you would please select the microphone icon to unmute your device if you want to speak on item public hearing item 75C. Zoom ID Carla Juarez. If you would please select the microphone or unmute. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. My name is Carla Juarez, a longtime resident of Santa Ana. I strongly oppose this development. La Gonzales has been a very big part of our community. It was one of the first places they could go buy groceries at affordable prices. But the development that they're behind now is not affordable to their community, which is very sad because the same essential workers that are working in the groceries and putting their lives at risk won't be able to afford this development, living in houses that rents begin at $2,000 and up. I mean, that's easy math. There's a lot of people in Santa Ana that can't afford it, especially people that live around Fourth Street or La Cuatro. So I don't know how this makes sense. And I feel very sad listening to other businesses like Teresa's Jewelry saying that it's welcome. It's welcome to those that are outside of Santa Ana that don't live here because they could afford it. And if the city council is there for their public, for the people that elected them, then why are you behind this? This is very shameful that La Gonzales wants to do this housing here when they can't afford it. Their essential workers can't afford it. $2,000 to the beginning rent? I mean, how many... I wonder how many people that are sitting right now in the city council could afford that by themselves without having to live with two or three families in there? Because that's what Santa Ana residents do in order to survive. They have two or three families living with them in order to survive for the rent. And this development is going to do just the same. When you talk about gentrification, this is gentrification. When you get priced out of your own neighborhood because you can't no longer afford the rent there. And this development only drives the surrounding areas to increase their rents. And this is not just a crazy lady talking. This is a crazy lady who's been working with the community, knocking doors, talking to people, having meetings. And to top it off, the meeting that La Gonzales did have, there is a lot of opposition. And those folks are not calling in or sending emails because the accessibility to them is not available. We also have to check our privilege. I'm fortunate enough to speak English. I'm fortunate enough to have Wi-Fi and affordable laptop and be able to log in and say my piece. But those people that walked in at the Sunshine Ordinance for La Gonzales were in opposition of this. There were more than 100. And though we only have a few owners...
15 seconds left.
Please listen to your community. This is not a benefit for you. It will price them out. And that is very sad because these are the same people, essential workers, that made your community when nobody wanted to live in. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 896. Please dial *6 to unmute your call or select the microphone icon on your device.
Good evening, council. This is Cesar Flores, executive director of the community commission. And we're calling in opposition to the proposed development. This is a development that is proposing new housing. But as we have discussed at length in past meetings, we need to build housing that is affordable to the community of Santana. Rents at $3,000, $4,000, $2,000 are not affordable to working families or workers in the stores of the applicant. We would like to also clear that the applicant is asking for concessions and incentives that they're not entitled to. So the city needs to apply the affordability provisions under the home. Or in addition to that, or in alternative, the identity bonus should be used to give incentive in exchange for affordability. There's no reason why the city or this developer should get a free incentive or a free development where they're not entitled to develop under the current regulations and land use requirements that the city is claiming for. Again, this is a proposal that's requesting incentives and concessions that they're not entitled to. The city should get something in return, and the residents of Santana should get affordable housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 451. Please dial *6 to unmute your call or select the microphone icon to unmute your device.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Isuri. I am a resident of Santana. I live in Ward 3. And I too am calling in opposition to this project. And one of the first things I want to say is that there has been no in-person community meeting on this project since August 29th of 2018. And at that meeting, the Sunshine Ordinance meeting that another caller also referenced, there were over 100 Santana residents in attendance that were in opposition. And the majority of those residents were of the Lacey neighborhood. So they live in the neighborhood that is walking distance to the proposed project site. And I am very concerned that this could move forward today without any other in-person community meetings to collect community feedback and see what the members of the community would like to see at that site. In 2018, they strongly expressed that there is a need for affordable housing. And I know another caller stated that there will be affordable housing at this site, but we know that that is not true. The rents will be extremely unaffordable to that community. It will be unaffordable to families that have extremely low incomes and very low incomes. And there's been talks of another project that will provide affordable housing, but that project is not this project. And I can't stand in support of this project. The residents of that neighborhood will not support this project unless there is affordable housing that will be affordable to families with extremely low and very low incomes provided on-site, not anywhere else in the city, not at another site nearby. But it has to be provided as a part of this project. And I ask that the city council really consider this. And before you make any decision, that you meet with the community, require that the developer have another community meeting that is in-person. And if that has to wait until the pandemic subsides, then that is what needs to happen. But we can't move forward with this project when there was such strong opposition at the only in-person community meeting that was held. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 383. Please dial *6 to unmute your call or select the microphone icon. Caller with the last three numbers, 383. Please dial *6 to unmute your call or select the microphone icon on your device. Caller with the last three numbers, 383. Please dial *6 to unmute your call or select the microphone icon on your device.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Aylin. ¿Si puede hablar una opinión?
Si, si puede hablar usted. Quiere hablar de...
Sí, claro. Este, mi nombre es Aylin, y he tenido la oportunidad de ser voluntaria en varios centros comunitarios. Y lo que yo he vivido, lo que he aprendido, es que nuestra comunidad se ha visto desplazada por este tipo de proyectos, ¿verdad? Donde gastan mucho dinero, en donde estas personas están invirtiendo dinero para sacar solamente ganancias para ellos mismos y no se dan cuenta del daño que les está haciendo a la comunidad. Santana, como recordamos, es una ciudad fundada por inmigrantes. Y nos hemos visto desplazados. Hay familias que han estado aquí en la ciudad de Santana por generaciones. Y también recordando que gracias a nosotros que compramos, a nuestras familias que compramos nuestra comida, a la tienda de la Norgay, pues tienen todo ese dinero, ¿verdad? Nosotros pagamos y obtenemos un producto... Obtenemos un producto de ello, pero es por nosotros que estamos consumiendo en esta tienda. Y este proyecto, pues solamente se ve que quieren poner dinero en su bolsillo y no están pensando en nuestra comunidad. Ya de por sí, ya tenemos problemas de que no se ha podido pasar un control de renta, que las rentas están subiendo mes a mes aún en la pandemia. Las rentas siguen subiendo. Con este proyecto, este edificio solamente le va a hacer un daño, solamente un daño. Y es a todos nuestros hijos porque nos vemos desplazados. Nos siguen desplazando. ¿Dónde nos vamos a ir? Familias enteras están viviendo en la calle. ¿Por qué la ciudad no está poniendo, no está construyendo más lugares para que estas personas tengan en donde dormir? ¿Por qué están aprobando estos proyectos? ¿Por qué nos están haciendo daño? Quieren invertir. Investen en nuestros hijos, en nuestra educación, en prepararnos también nosotros. Porque se ve, nada más los que son ricos pueden superarse. Nosotros también, solamente que no tenemos esos recursos. O sea, nosotros siempre se nos han negado. Lo único que se nos ocurre es, o voy a hacer este proyecto que ni siquiera mi familia va a tener oportunidad de comprar un departamento ahí. O por lo menos esos departamentos van a ser para los empleados. ¿Van a ser para los empleados? No van a ser para los empleados. Ni siquiera, ni siquiera, ¿verdad? Que ni siquiera tienen un sueldo justo, ni honrado, ni se les trata como debe de ser. Pero bueno, esto no es... No se los dejo a su conciencia, más bien hagan su trabajo y lo que deben de hacer. Es Santana, es la ciudad de Santana. Y aquí mis hijos aquí nacieron, y aquí ellos van a estudiar y a su ciudad van a servir, y eso va a seguir adelante. Y eso es todo. Gracias.
Gracias. The translator will come in in a minute and interpret.
I volunteer in Santa Ana for many, many years in community centers. And what I've learned about the community is that these kinds of projects are displacing us. The community is being displaced by these projects. They have money to invest, but they'll only invest to get their own profits for themselves. And in these projects, they damage the community. Santana was founded by immigrants. It's an immigrant city. And families in Santa Ana have been here for generations. Please remember that it is thanks to us who buy their food that Northgate has all that money to buy this project, to do this project. We buy our food from them, and thanks to us, this is what happens. And this is money that they want to keep in their pockets. They're not thinking about our community, especially now that we don't even have rent control in the city. Rents keep going up and up, month after month, even within the pandemic. We are being displaced, and the families are living... Entire families are living on the streets. And why don't you use this money to build places for people to sleep? Why don't you invest in ourselves, invest in our progress, invest in our education? And only the rich people benefit from this. And this is a project that only... that our families cannot afford. And is this going to be for their employees? Of course not. They don't make a salary that's fair, that's enough for that. So I'm not going to ask you to touch your hearts. I'm going to ask you to do your jobs. Santa Ana is our city. Our children were born here. Our children will live here, and our children will serve here in the future.
Caller with the last three numbers, 214. Please dial *6 to unmute your call or select the microphone icon on your device.
Persona en el teléfono con los tres últimos números, 214. Por favor, marque estrella seis para reactivar su llamada.
Hello?
Hello, you may proceed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I can give my comment now?
Is this for 75C on the Fourth and Mortimer project?
That's correct, the Northgate project, yes.
Yes.
75C.
Yes, you may proceed.
So hi, good evening, Council of Santana. My name is Alexis Teodoro, and I'm a Santa Ana resident. You know, I'm also, you know, I'm a product of the Santa Ana Unified School District, and I'm an aspiring business owner as well. So I understand what the business owners are saying about the project. However, as has been highlighted by residents and the Kennedy Commission, this project hasn't had a public meeting for years. And it's a little bit disrespectful that even though we have a Sunshine Ordinance, the spirit of the Sunshine Ordinance is not followed. And, you know, we do live in participatory democracy here, or at least us residents make sure that you follow participatory democracy whenever these decisions are made in a non-transparent way. The council should be responsible enough to recognize that while this is an investment opportunity for the city, it has not gone through the democratic transparent processes that allows us residents to voice our opinion. And this vote should not go through today. It should be blocked and postponed until a public meeting is had. And if that means that we have to hold off until we are safely able to gather in groups, then that's what that means, because we cannot keep making decisions in a non-transparent way. And this comment is not just for the council. It's for the Planning Commission that voted seven and zero to approve this item to be discussed tonight. I wonder how many of the Planning Commissions, because some of them are attorneys themselves, I wonder if they have business ties with Northgate. Who knows? You know, but as residents, we need to investigate these things, because nobody voted in opposition. That means they're not taking the voices of the residents who, two years ago, as another caller mentioned, 100 people were against it. This is not okay to fly over democracy and make these decisions under a crisis, when we don't have time or we have the ability to go to council, because some of us are dealing with coronavirus right now. So please, I urge you respectfully, honorable council, do not make a vote and postpone this issue until the community has been able to voice their opinion in a democratic participatory way. Thank you very much, and I am against this project until we have public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 933, please dial *6 to unmute your call or select the microphone icon to unmute your device.
Persona en el teléfono con los tres últimos números 933, por favor marque estrella seis para reactivar su llamada.
Good evening.
Good evening. You may proceed with your comment.
I'm calling in because I'd like to uplift Isuri's, Alexis', and Carla's comments. I think it's important for this council to know that during community meetings in 2019 and in 2018, there was strong opposition against this project. I think that this context is important and relevant for you to hear, because I don't recall seeing any of you at those meetings. And for more information, I just wanted to share the information that these sessions were recorded. So if you wanted to know more about what your community thinks or stands, or where we stand on this project, you know, I encourage you to watch those sessions. And again, I think it's important information to pass along. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have the applicant, Oscar Gonzalez, who's going to speak on behalf of the applicant for public hearing item 75C. If you would please dial, select the microphone icon to unmute your call.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Polito, Honorable Mayor Protem Viejas, and the honorable members of the city council. My name's Oscar Gonzalez. Our family markets have been serving Santa Ana for 27 years. I personally have basically run, half my life have run grocery stores in the city of Santa Ana. And I do want to provide a little bit of context. In 1992, my family purchased both parcels, one that is vacant today, and second, the one where the market is. And originally, our idea was to open a, you know, a large 40,000 square foot store. And unfortunately, back then, you know, the approval was basically to open a smaller market. And I share this because our land in this, our vacant lot, there has been sitting vacant for 25 years. And so I just, I want to provide that context as well. We are very appreciative of to present our project tonight, and we also want to express our sincere thanks to the city, the city staff for guiding this project. This has been few years of in the makings through multiple submissions and refinements to make really a top-quality development. We're excited to continue with our investment in Santa Ana by bringing a quality multifamily mixed-use project to the downtown. The project is transit-oriented, and it's placing housing in the right place next to where the streetcar will run. I'll tell you, my family's committed to the city of Santa Ana. We have been for many, many years. We plan to own this project for a long, long time, and we are very committed to continue to enhance the community. You know, tonight, joining us are our team, Andrew Nelson from Red Oak Development, who is a partner in the project, Juan Garcia and Carl Milton with Northgate. And we're prepared to answer any questions. Before that, I will tell you, we are, we are committed to always doing the right thing, and we will always do what's right. And that's something that is very important to me and to my family. And we hope that you're as excited about this project as we are, and we respectfully ask for your approval tonight. And again, I just want to thank you and ask you for approval tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caller with the Zoom webinar ID, Brian Flynn. If you would please select the microphone icon to unmute your call.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You may proceed.
Fantastic. Good evening. My name is Brian Flynn. I'm an attorney with Los Outrery on behalf of the Appellate Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, or SAFER. In the short time I have, I want to highlight why SAFER believes this project should not be approved at this time, and the appeal should be granted. First, CECLA does not allow an addendum to be used for this project. The addendum was inappropriately prepared by looking to the 2010 TZC EIR, and then applying CECLA's subsequent review provisions, specifically Public Resources Code 21166. However, those subsequent review provisions are not applicable. The situation here is that the 2010 EIR is a self-described program-level EIR for the whole TZC area, and the Fourth and Mortimer project is a specific project within that area. CECLA has specific procedures for such a situation that must be applied. Under these applicable procedures, an EIR or negative declaration is required if there are new impacts not covered by the previous EIR. Notably, these provisions make no mention of using an addendum, because CECLA does not contemplate the use of an addendum in this situation. SAFER also submitted a comment from, excuse me, from a renowned air quality expert, found the project would have significant cancer risks due to indoor formaldehyde emissions. His conclusions are based on studies that were not available in 2010, and so those now constitute new information demonstrating a significant human health impact. Also, we live a city, failed to apply the affordable housing requirements of the Housing Opportunity Ordinance. The ordinance applies to residential projects that increase density above the density permitted by the general plan. Site B of this project is designated as urban neighborhood with a density allowed up to 50 dwelling units per acre, and the project is proposing to build 54 dwelling units per acre on Site B. And so because Site B exceeds that dwelling unit limit, then the ordinance applies, and its inclusionary requirements apply to the project. So because the use of the addendum is inappropriate under CECLA, and because the inclusionary housing requirements must be applied to the project, we respectfully request the council grant the appeal and not make any further approvals for the project at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor. Caller with the last three numbers, 196, please dial *6 to unmute your call or select the microphone icon to unmute your device. Caller with the last three numbers, 196, please dial *6 to unmute your call or select the microphone icon to unmute your device. Thank you. You may proceed to speak.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I wanted to address Oscar Gonzalez's comments. As a resident of Santa Ana for over 35 years, I find it very disrespectful that, you know, that your company has...
I'm sorry, caller, did you already speak?
You have not.
Would you please state your name for the record?
Yes, it's Maria.
Okay, you may proceed.
Can I first...? Thank you. Again, this message is for Oscar Gonzalez and his entire family. I just want to make sure that it's noted and it's recorded that your six stores in the city of Santa Ana have thrived off of the working families and the customers that have made your stores here in the city. I find it very disrespectful that you assume that the development that will be built on these two blocks that your family owns is going to benefit the immediate community, and not the developers or the business owners that have invested in our city, that have pushed out many families. Brian Chase is a disgrace to the downtown Santa Ana area, along with the city. He doesn't live in Santa Ana, has been here for over 100 years with his family, and has continuously displaced a lot of our families. If you are invested in our city, Oscar Gonzalez, I urge you to request that this development stop until you can actually meet with the community and walk and talk to the residents in the area. For council members that have been part of this development from the very beginning, that have voted in the past against it, I urge you to remember how you voted and why you voted in opposition to this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, that was the last caller.
Thank you very much. So we already heard from the public. We will not take any more calls. We heard from the applicant. And Madam City Manager, do we have a presentation on the project?
Yes, Mayor Protem, we do have a presentation that will be given by Executive Director Min Thai of Planning and Building, and it will also answer some of the questions that were brought up during the public comment period.
Okay, very good. So I'm going to close the public hearing and go ahead and proceed. Mr. Min?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, this is an application that is pertaining to appeal application 2020-02, addendum to Transit Zoning Code EIR, as well as amendment application 2020-04 for the Fourth and Mortimer Street Mixed Use Development Project. On October 12th, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to adopt a resolution approving the EIR, to addendum to the EIR for the Transit Zoning Code site, as well as recommending to the city council approval of the addendum and the amendment application project. On October 22nd, 2020, the city staff received an appeal application on the portion of the project that was approved by the Planning Commission, which is the addendum approving the variance and the site plan review. Therefore, before you tonight are two matters. One is the appeal, and second is the approval of the amendment and the addendum to the EIR as recommended by the Planning Commission. This is the project location and land use. As you can see, it's two sites that are split by Mortimer between Fifth and Fourth Street. Currently, the Site A is Zone District Center. I'm sorry, the general plan is District Center, and Site B is Urban Neighborhood. The zoning for the site is the Transit Zoning Code SD84 with the sub-zone of downtown for Site A and UN2 for Site B. The proposed is to change only the zoning for Site B from UN2 to UC. And the purpose of this zoning change is to allow for the development of a line-block building, which allows the building to go all the way to the property line, and it's a building form rather than any other types of changes in terms of density. The site is surrounded by commercial and single-family residential to the north, south, and east, and commercial and the city parking structure to the west. This is a map showing the changes to the zone changes I mentioned. And again, you can see on the top right-hand there, which is the existing. Site A is not being changed. Site B is the one that's being proposed, and the bottom map there shows the changes to Site B going to... But there is no change in the general plan, as this is significant in terms of the discussion on the application of the "who" that was brought up by the applicant on the appeal, which I'll discuss later. Here is a site photo looking northeast of the project site from Fourth Street, and I believe this is French. Both photos looking at the site with the existing market. This is a photo of the, looking northeast at Fourth and Mortimer. The existing auto repair shop that you see there will be, continue to stay. It is not a part of the project. The bottom photo is a northwest view at Fourth and Minter. The project briefly is to demolish the existing grocery market and the surface parking lot on Site A and B, and to construct a new mixed-use project on both blocks consisting of a total 169 residential units, 99 on Site A, 70 on Site B. The unit mix, as you can see, includes a variety of studios, one bedroom, two, three, and four bedrooms, with a significant number of four-bedroom units, which are for family. Not very many projects of this size proposes that type of number of bedrooms, and we have worked with the applicant to really create a bedroom profile that would help to assist with family, as well as different types of living arrangements. The project will provide approximately 11,000 square feet of commercial resale space on-site on the ground floor. Will be primarily facing the Fourth Street along the streetcar right-of-way. There will be 422 parking spaces, providing a ratio of 2.3 parking spaces per unit, which is higher than what the Transit Zoning Code required at a rate of 2.15. Here's the site plan looking at the project. As you can see, as I mentioned, there's retail on the ground floor for Site A. Site B is entirely residential. The parking garages for the project site will be accessed off of Fifth Street for both sites. This is a rendering of the site. As you can see, it is a project that has multi-story with ground-floor retail. The ground floor has been designed to allow for fenestration of the building to basically be consistent with the cadence and rhythm of downtown with large bulkhead windows, allowing for outdoor seating, as well as interior access. And this is a view of the project looking northeast at Fourth and French, and you can see the streetcar right-of-way in the rendering. Here's another view of that same corner. The appeal application, as submitted by... The appeal application, as submitted by the firm representing Safer, basically made three assertion. The first is that a new EIR is required. The second is that the project did not comply with the Housing or the WHO ordinance. And the third is the Planning Commission failed to consider the public letter received. Again, I just want to highlight that the only action taken by the Planning Commission was the action to adopt the resolution approving the addendum of the EIR for the Transit Zoning Code under these three assertions. The other two, assertion two and three, do not apply. And I'll explain the reasons. The addendum to the CEQA document, as we review for the Transit Zoning 2010 EIR Transit Zoning Code, basically indicate that the project with the technical studies that were provided did not create any additional impact that had not been analyzed in the EIR. And under CEQA Regulations Section 15162 as well as PRC 2166, that a new EIR should not be required if the project does not create any substantial impact that was not analyzed before. And based on the studies that were completed for this project, the project did not create any additional impact that has not been analyzed. Therefore, an EIR or a new document cannot be required, and the addendum is the appropriate document. So that is our response to the CEQA documentation, and that's been presented in the staff report as well. The WHO does not apply here because the current WHO ordinance only requires a project to comply with the regulations of the WHO if there is a change in the general plan designation of the project site that increases the density of the project. This project does not have a general plan amendment application with it that is required because it's not asking for a density increase under the general plan. Thirdly, the assertion that all written verbal comments weren't considered by the Planning Commission is an incorrect statement and unsubstantiated. The panel did not provide any evidence substantiating this that is compelling because all of the public comments verbal were presented to the Planning Commission during the public hearing. All written comments were provided through the Planning Commission prior to the hearing, including the written comments provided by the applicant. So all of those issues, all of those comments were considered by the Planning Commission prior to them making that decision. The project has some fiscal benefit as well as job benefits. As you can see, it would generate approximately 5.4 million net new positive general fund over the 25 year period. Therefore, based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission, as well as the analysis that has been completed by staff, we recommend that you adopt the resolution denying the appeal application, adopt a resolution approving the addendum to the EIR for the Transit Zoning Code, and approving Amendment Application 2020-04, as well as adopting an ordinance approving Amendment Application 2020-04. That concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Is there any questions by any council members? If not, then is there a motion or a second?
Mayor Potem?
Go ahead, Councilmember Basera.
First, I wanted to start off by thanking Mr. Thai for that explanation. I think that it was important for everybody to hear why this is in front of us and why staff is making the recommendation that they're making. Another thing I want to say is I'm just really, I was really impressed with the outpouring of support for this project. I mean, folks that have been longstanding pillars of the downtown community, taking their time out this evening to testify in support of this project, which it's a beautiful project, and it's being done by folks that have invested enormously in our community. The North Gate folks, the Gonzalez's, have done a lot for our city, not just economically, but charitably and otherwise. So, but right now, we're looking at a project and whether it makes sense in the downtown and at this location, and it absolutely does. And with that, Mayor Potem, I'd like to go ahead and just go ahead and make a motion that we adopt the resolution denying the appeal, approve and adopt the addendum to the EIR for the Transit Zoning Code, and adopt the ordinance approving the zoning amendment.
Thank you. With that, is there a second?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Potem. This is Councilmember Penyalosa. I would like to second.
You have a first and a second. Is there any other comments from any council members?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Potem, I'd like to make some comments.
Go ahead, Councilmember Solorio.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Oscar Gonzalez for personally making this presentation to the council. I know early on in my current term back, they gave me an update, and I knew they were kicking input because months later, when they came back, they took into account, you know, input that I gave and others. So I was appreciative, and it's a very worthy project today, and I'm going to be very proud to vote for it. To address some of the community questions, because yes, definitely, you know, I heard a lot of the support, but I heard kind of just some criticality to it all and the city's direction. And I just wanted to make, you know, a few observations that at least are important to me as I think about this project as well. Number one, to continue to help with overall affordability in our city and the region and the state, supply and demand is very important. And, you know, we've already, on the affordable housing side in Santa Ana, I know during the past few years that I've been back on the council, you know, we approved and have completed or under construction 1,500 affordable housing units. That's huge. And so now we do have, you know, some more market rate type of projects like this one, but I think it'll be helpful still overall. Also, you know, we want diverse housing stocks so that people of all income levels can live in Santa Ana, and that includes people that were once lower income or couldn't afford something like this, that then when they maybe do better in their job or start a business and successful, that they have a move-up opportunity, something positive and be proud of in Santa Ana rather than feeling like they then have to move to Irvine or some other place to find that opportunity. And then when that move-up opportunity occurs, it frees up a prior place in Santa Ana where they used to live before, and that could be more affordable and as well be available. And then finally, and it was mentioned before, you know, I'm proud of the light rail project. Many of you know, I also used to work at OCTA. And so we need that light rail project to be successful for the city and for the working-class folks we have in town and others that want to use that light rail system. And that means we need nice developments that are going to attract and bench additional folks to live there, shop there, and use the light rail. So because of that, and also the tremendous work by the city staff to put this project together, I'm in full support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solorio. Is there any other comments from any other council members? Okay, I don't hear any, so I will-
Mr. Mayor Potem?
Go ahead, Councilmember Penyalosa.
Really quick, I just wanted to give credit to the applicant. About a year ago, they reached out to me and they asked, since I do at the time represented the downtown district, and they asked, what could we do, you know, as this process, we're beginning this process, as we're moving on? And I said, you need to do what I did to get in this office and knock on doors. And I sent them out there, and they knocked on numerous doors surrounding the property, the residential, the single-family homes, the businesses. And from what I believe, we received numerous letters of support from those properties immediately that go up against the property along Mortimer and Fourth and Fifth Street. So I just wanted to make it known to any future applicant that this is what you should do. You should knock on those doors wherever your property is and do the outreach yourself. Don't expect city staff, I mean, city staff should do it as well, but it would go a long ways if the applicant, you know, does it and get ahead of themselves and do this outreach. So just wanted to thank them for doing that.
Thank you very much. I want to thank all the council members for their comments, and I agree. I also want to thank everyone who called and participated in the meeting. And with that, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Basera?
Councilmember Mendoza, was that you?
Yes, my vote is yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Councilmember Penyalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Vegas?
Yes.
Motion carries five, two abstentions.
Very good, two abstentions. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item, Madam Clerk, which is?
Item 75D.
75D is, are we going to, is the mayor coming back and Councilmember Sarmiento?
Well, I stand, Mayor Potem, I stand on two items, so I'm going to stand on this one as well, but I think Councilmember Sarmiento will return.
Okay, very good. Yeah, he has joined us now. So, item 75D, this is a time and place to open a public hearing. Environmental Review, number 2018-83, General Plan Amendment, number 2020-04 on the Amendment Application, number 2020-02 to facilitate the construction of an eight-unit condominium development at 301 and 305 North Mountain View Street. And do we have any callers on that item? I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, so do we have any callers, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Potem. So we did not receive any written communications, and we have no callers on the lines waiting to speak on item 75D.
Okay, very good. Does the council prefer to have a, will they wish to have a presentation on this or fairly small project?
I'd like to see the presentation.
Presentation, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Thai.
Thank you, Mayor Potem.
This item is on approval of an eight-unit condominium development project on Mountain View Street. The application is seeking approval for Environmental Review 2018-83, General Plan Amendment 2020-04, and Amendment Application number 2020-02. The project site is located 301 through 305 North Mountain View Street. The Planning Commission recommended 403, with three members being absent, for the approval of the project to the City Council on October 26th. Now, the project is located on Mountain View Street between Fifth and First Street. The general plan is existing low-medium-density residential, LMR11. The proposed change will be to MR15, which is medium residential, 15 units to the acre. The existing zoning of the site is agricultural A1. This is really an outdated zone within the city where the intent is to look at primarily agricultural-type uses. This, along with other properties throughout the city, the Zone A1, have really all been changed to residential uses or commercial office, and it is a zoning classification that is outdated. Therefore, they're proposing to change it to R2 residential. The site is surrounded by multifamily residential developed to the north, south, and east, and single-family residence to the west. The lot is about 32,000 square feet and is currently developed with two single-family residences. The project is to demolish the existing structures and develop an eight-unit, basically four duplexes. The unit is approximately 18 square feet, containing three bedrooms and 2.5 bathrooms. The structures are two-story, approximately 27 feet high. The project is required to have 32 parking spaces, two located in the garage, two surface parking spaces. The project has met that requirement by providing two in the garage and two in the driveway for each unit. There is a common open space area for the project site, approximately 2,000 square feet, as well as 300 plus to 850 square feet of private open space per unit in the rear yards. Here's the site plan of the project. To the left there is the Mountain View Street, and then there's a driveway on the south side of the project site with the four duplexes aligned to the north along the north property line. And then to the east there is the Lake Park, Mountain, Lake Park, Mobile Home Park that is adjacent to the site. This is the rendering of the project development architecture style. It is a modern Spanish colonial that has tile roof with stucco and wood trimming indicative of this architectural style. This is a general plan amendment showing you it's being changed from LMR11, as I mentioned, to LMR15. Certain areas of this entire block will be LR7, which are existing, developed with single-family homes. The MR15 will allow the site to be developed in the R2 Zone standard, which is something that is already existing in the area. As you can see here, the existing zoning of the block includes A1, R2, as well as R4 and R2. However, the general plan need to be amended in order for the zoning and the general plan to be consistent so that property can be developed at the density intended. As I mentioned earlier, the A1 zoning is an agricultural zoning, which is outdated and really is intent on the focus of agricultural uses, which we don't have in the city. The project, we believe, meets the core requirements of the city in terms of creating additional opportunity for ownership housing. The proposed general plan, as well as the amendment, will help to clean up the inconsistent land uses, as well as updating and modernizing some of the zoning code and zoning classification in the area to create a cohesive development pattern. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission, adopt the resolution approving the MND, adopt a resolution approving the general plan amendment, and adopt an ordinance approving the amendment application. That concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. Does any council members have any questions for the gentleman? If not, okay, we close the public hearing, and thank you very much for the presentation. And I don't see or hear any questions from council members. So do we have a motion to approve?
Mayor Potem, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the MND, the general plan amendment, and the zoning amendment as well.
Second.
Very good. We have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Basera?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Penyalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Vegas?
Yes.
Motion carries six, one, with one abstention.
Very good. And I believe we have the mayor back on the line.
Yes, the mayor's online.
Okay, very good. The next item, Madam Clerk, for the mayor?
Mayor, we are on-
I'm right here. Go ahead, please.
Yes, we're on a public hearing, item 75E.
Okay, let me go ahead and open up that public hearing. And first of all, let me ask staff if there's any presentation that you'd like to make, and then we'll hear from the public.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Just very briefly, the item before you is for a public hearing and to adopt a resolution approving a mitigated neg, DEC or Negative Declaration and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And the city has a well that was originally constructed in 1980, and we plan to rehabilitate and reconfigure the existing site, and this is the necessary step to move forward with that action.
Are there any members of the public that wish to address us during the public hearing, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we do not.
Let me bring it back to council. Any questions by council? If not, I entertain a motion. Council members?
Motion approved.
Any other comment? If no more comments, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Basera?
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Penyalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yeah.
Mayor Potem Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
So we now go on to item 75F, I believe?
That's correct.
This is time and place for a public, I'm going to open up a public hearing for item 75F, and I'm going to turn it over to staff for a presentation. Madam City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So the item before you is to adopt a resolution-
So, the item before you is to adopt a resolution, which is the first step in declaring the public necessity for the condemnation of a portion of real property. The city is acquiring the properties for the development of Phase One of the Warner Avenue Improvements Project, bounded by Main Street and Oak Street. The city does have a construction timetable to begin in early twenty-twenty-one, and to maintain the Warner Avenue Improvement Project schedule and meet the funding requirements to commence the construction on that timeframe. Staff is requesting adoption of the resolution of necessity. We do have staff also available if you have any questions on this item.
Let's keep them available if we have questions. Madam Clerk, are there any comments from the public?
Thank you, Mayor. So, we only received one written communication from Wells Fargo, the property owner, in opposition to this item, and we have no callers who wants to speak on this item.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any thoughts, questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Peñalosa.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Peñalosa. Thank you for that. Is there a second to Peñalosa's motion, please?
Second, Councilmember Mendoza.
If there are no comments, I'll call for a roll call vote. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio? Mayor Potem Vegas is absent. Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries-
So, now we go to item seventy-five D. This time and place for a public hearing. On seventy-five D, I'll now open up the public hearing. Is there a presentation from staff, please?
Yes, Mayor, this item is extremely similar to the one that we just had before you. It is also to acquire a property to further the Warner Avenue improvements, and it's a public hearing to adopt the resolution to start the process to declare the public necessity and condemn the parcel to accommodate the Warner widening.
Thank you for that. Madam Clerk, are there any members of the audience that wish to address this?
Thank you, Mayor. We did receive one written communication from J. Pacific International Property Owner, indicating feasible alternative proposal, and we do not have any callers who wants to speak on this item.
Thank you. If there are no questions by councilmembers, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Peñalosa, is there a second?
Was the public hearing closed?
Yes. Public, sorry, if it wasn't clear, it is closed.
Got it.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second, the motion.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yeah.
Mayor Potem Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero.
I now want to direct our attention to the Housing Authority Meeting. I'm gonna call that body to order and ask the clerk to do a roll call vote, I mean, roll call, please.
Authority member Becerra?
Here.
Authority member Mendoza?
Here.
Authority member Peñalosa?
Here.
Authority member Sarmiento?
Here.
Authority member Solorio? Vice Chair Vegas?
Here.
Chair Pulido?
I am here as well. I now would entertain a motion on items one through three on our consent calendar. Can I have such a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, I believe a second by Mayor Potem. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Authority member Becerra?
Yes.
Authority member Mendoza?
Yes.
Authority member Peñalosa?
Yes.
Authority member Sarmiento?
Yes.
Authority member Solorio?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Vegas?
Yes.
Chair Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero.
And I want to direct our attention to business calendar item number four. It's to prove an update to the Housing Choice Voucher Program and Administrative Plan. Do we have any presentation from staff?
No presentation, but staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Do we have any questions from members, authority members? If not, I'd like to see if there's a motion on the recommended action.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second. So, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote if there's no more discussion. Madam Clerk, please go ahead.
Authority member Becerra?
Yes.
Authority member Mendoza?
Yes.
Authority member Peñalosa?
Yes.
Authority member Sarmiento?
Yes.
Authority member Solorio? Vice Chair Vegas?
Yes.
And Chair Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-
I now want to direct our attention to the Successor Agency meeting, call that to order, and I want the clerk to please do a roll call for the Successor Agency.
Councilmember Becerra?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Here.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Here.
Councilmember Solorio? Mayor Potem Vegas?
Present.
Mayor Pulido?
I'm here. I now wanna see, are there any public comments for the Successor Agency, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any, and we have no written communications.
Okay. So, then let's, I would entertain a motion on items one, two, and three. Actually, two is probably not even necessary, because we have nobody absent, but I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Becerra. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yeah.
Mayor Potem Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero.
I now, I would now adjourn the Successor Agency and reconvene to City Council meeting, and I want to bring our attention to item eighty-five A, and ask councilmembers Becerra and Mendoza to please take the lead on this, and let's have a good discussion item here. Please go ahead, councilmembers.
Thank you. Councilmember Becerra, would you take the lead, please? The park is in your word, and it would be appropriate for you to take the lead on this.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Mendoza. I know that you've been a longtime active member with the Kiwanis Club, and Thornton Park is just right up the street from my house, and the Barrier Free Park is a wonderful amenity in Thornton Park, and I want to thank Councilmember Mendoza for bringing this item to our attention regarding Mr. Upton, who was a longtime, very active member of the Kiwanis here in Santa Ana. And I'll go ahead and throw it over to you, Councilmember Mendoza, if you'd like to tell the community more about George Upton.
Yes, definitely. Thank you, Councilmember Becerra. The playground is currently named the Kiwanis Barrier Free Playground, but in, which was in access, it came to, it was celebrated in March eighteenth of twenty-fifteen. It is a park which gives children with special needs a place to play and socialize with other kids. And the Kiwanis Club of Santa Ana, and in particular, may George Upton help make it happen. Thanks to the club's partnership with the city and the dedication of long, longtime club member, Mr. George Upton, whose passion drove the project. So, the five-point-five-acre space is in environmentally friendly space, green space, in which kids of all abilities interact. So, at Carl Thornton Park, and within the park, the, this playground has been utilized by the Kiwanis Club for more than twelve years, which has been funded and conducted various luncheons per year for the special needs classes for these children. These events have been popular among parents and kids, and many of, who have come here from poor financial backgrounds, and thus, they're very special and significant to the community. And now about Mr. Upton. So, what this, my, my item, it proposes to rename the Kiwanis Barrier Free Playground to the George Upton All Access Park. And in doing so, we will be renaming this park and recognizing and identifying a person who has made an extraordinary donation of time, effort, and funds to improve the, to promote the improvement of a public facility. Renaming the park to the George Upton Access Free Park, which is the name that recognizes that George Upton, who made significant contributions to the well-being of our city, its residents, children, and especially children with disabilities. George Upton was born in Tampa, Florida, on October fifteenth, nineteen-twenty, and he passed away peacefully in his sleep on June twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteen, at the tender age of ninety-eight. He grew up in San Bernardino, California, joined the U.S. Navy during World War Two. He fought in the Pacific and served bravely from nineteen forty-five to nineteen, from nineteen forty-two to nineteen forty-five. After the war, he worked for the airlines, and while layover in New York in October of nineteen forty-seven, he met his dear Jean, the love of his wife, and they were on a blind date. After getting married there, in January of nineteen forty-eight, George and Jean moved to California and ultimately settled in the beautiful city of Santa Ana, where they raised their family. Mr. Upton worked in advertising for Masiduko Sales and Management and for the county of Orange. He retired in nineteen eighty-two, and in retirement, Mr. Upton found his passion for philanthropic work. He served as an elder and deacon for the first Presbyterian Church of Santa Ana. He was president of the Friends of the Santa Ana Public Library, and in his spare time, he taught boating and navigation courses at the Santa Ana College. So, you can see how he's connected to our beautiful city. Mr. Upton joined the Kiwanis Club of Santa Ana in nineteen eighty, and was a Kiwanian of the year in nineteen eighty-two, and he served as president ninety-five and ninety-six. He worked tirelessly with fellow Kiwanians to improve the lives of special needs children in Santa Ana. He volunteered at Carl Harvey School, and he helped to create the Barrier Free Park in Santa Ana. So, annually, but temporarily on hold because of the COVID restrictions, the Kiwanis Club generally hosts the George Upton Picnic for Santa Ana children at the park. So, we hope to resume that once we have the park renamed and the restrictions have been lifted. So, I ask my fellow councilpeople to please support me and Councilmember Becerra in the renaming of the park to the George Upton All Access Park, and give him the honor that he deserves for all the wonderful philanthropic work he has done with the city of Santa Ana and its disabled children.
Mr. Mayor? This is Councilmember Florida. I want, I want to thank Councilmember Mendoza and Becerra for bringing this forward. I know Kiwanis has been thinking about this for some time, and was working on signs, and I know we even had a nice cleanup day once with a lot of Key Club student members from Santa Ana and the broader area, so it's a great project, and it's been that for a long time, and renaming in honor of, you know, this gentleman is fantastic, and I want to put my support behind the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I echo those comments, by the way. Thank you to councilmembers for bringing it forward, and I was there when we originally began that barrier park project, and I think this is an enhancement to it. Any additional comments from councilmembers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just for the record, Councilmember Sarmiento, I want to thank the councilmembers that raised this as well. I do recall when the Barrier Free Park was also constructed, and I am supportive of recognizing Mr. Upton and all the efforts by the Kiwanis Club. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Thank you for that. Additional comments? Does the city manager feel she has a solid direction on this?
Mr. Mayor, really quick, I have a few comments, just one, actually.
Please, go ahead.
I also wanted to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward, but I also wanted to, to mention, see if we could maybe find a little bit of funds, in the cannabis funds, that maybe we could use towards giving a, give a little facelift to the playground, maybe a paint job or a good power wash. I know that last time I was there was during the, last year during the cop night out event that they had there in that area, and I noticed that there was a lot of etched graffiti into the playground, and, and, you know, it, you know, if we're gonna, kinda like what we did with the skate parks in Central Park, you know, it was a, it was a nice sign with Pat McQuinn, McQuiggin that we did. That was unfortunately later vandalized a couple weeks later, but if we could see what we could do to just given a little, give a little facelift to the playground, that would be nice. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I think that's an excellent suggestion. Any additional comments, councilmembers? If not, let me go to city manager comments, please.
Sir, just a couple of updates. CARES Money, we are winding down the program, as we have a hard deadline to spend the dollars that we receive that support the programs by the end of the calendar year. We are still receiving applications for financial assistance, so I strongly encourage residents and businesses to apply. We will be taking those until December fifteenth. December twentieth will be the final day of our free COVID tested that's funding, funded through this program, but we are looking for other ways to continue to provide testing to our community, and we ask everyone to follow the state health rules and wear masks to help reduce the positivity rate. And for members of the public who are concerned about residents and businesses that aren't following the state COVID guidelines, the city has launched the COVID Compliance Center, which people can call about possible violations, and the number is seven-one-four-six-four-seven four-seven four-seven. Easy one to remember. And finally, the last item is just to announce that there will be the closure of Bristol Street at Santa Ana Boulevard. Our OC Streetcar Construction is progressing into a significant phase that will require the full closure of this intersection, beginning Friday evening, December fourth, for approximately one week. The closure is necessary to construct the westbound tracks on Santa Ana Boulevard crossing Bristol. These rails run along the north edge of the Santa Ana Boulevard roadway. OCTA and the streetcar contractor Walsh have been preparing for this closure by placing advance warning signs advising motorists of the work. OCTA will coordinate announcing the closure and details on social media, detours, sorry, on social media and all other available means, and the city staff is reviewing a daily work plan for the closure, so that progress may be monitored and the reopening of Bristol occurs without any unnecessary delays. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for that. I now want to go to- I now want to go to councilmember comments. Councilwoman Becerra, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank our staff for all the work that they've been doing this year. I do want to give a special praise and shout out to Nabil Saba because, you know, I bug the heck out of Nabil for so many requests. And Nabil delivers like nobody can. So, I just, I want to thank you. And, you know, to folks that have reached out to me regarding trees, sidewalks, street repairs. I'll take as much credit as I can. But really, the majority of that credit really truly deserves to go to Nabil. So, Nabil, thank you and your staff for taking care of all that you do. Also, I wanted to bring up the program that the city is collaborating with the Santa Ana Unified School District on regarding students being able to check out books from our library using their student ID card. I think that's a fantastic idea. And any way that we can encourage use of our libraries from our local children would be fantastic. I would also like to remind our staff that we do have other districts in town, including on the west side, we have Garden Grove Unified School District. So, I would ask our staff to look into possible collaboration with our friends over there at Garden Grove Unified. I think, you know, primarily west of the river, we have a lot of students over there. And I would imagine that they would benefit from utilizing our library and its wonderful resources. And with that, I hope everybody had a safe and wonderful Thanksgiving. And that's all I have. Good night.
Thank you for that. Good evening. And Councilwoman Mendoza, please.
Thank you. I just also want to wish everyone a belated Thanksgiving. Good wishes and continue to be safe. Wear your mask. And we need to bring these numbers out and continue to do a good job for our residents. So, I have some talking points from the sanitation water district, but I need a moment to find them. They'll call on me again at the...
Let me go to Councilwoman Penyloza, and then I'll come back to you. Councilwoman Penyloza, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank the city manager for bringing that closure of Bristol Street in Santa Ana to our attention earlier today and to the public. I want to encourage that our public works and our contractors and our inspectors are out there, you know, looking at this work. I was on my way here tonight to the council chambers. I was driving north on Flower Street and took a right on Santa Ana Boulevard. And that immediate right turn into Santa Ana Boulevard felt like I fell into a 10-foot dip. I know that the work, I can't express how terrible, terrible that work being done has been for our community and our residents in downtown. I know it's only temporary. But this temporary work and patch work should be done to a standard where we don't feel like we're driving, like we're going off-roading. And I know that this is still a year and a half, two years of construction that we're still going to deal with. So, I would want to highly express and encourage our staff is on top of the work that OCTA is doing and making sure that we're holding them accountable with the work being done. And that it's because in no other city, they would allow this to fly. And we shouldn't either. So, with that said, I also want to thank our CARES team. I mean, I can't express enough how good of a job you guys are doing out there. I got tested at Thoron Park last week, and the line was insane. And I know that all our sites have been seeing, you know, two-hour waits, you know, if anything, you know, at these, to get COVID testing. And whatever we could do, if we need to beef up, you know, staff, not sure if on what side, on the city side or on, but, I mean, we should be able to alleviate some of that. Because, no, a lot of our residents, you know, I was out there and I saw some residents in their scrubs themselves or in their uniform and talking how that was their lunch hour. They were trying to use their lunch hour to get tested for COVID-19. And they ended up leaving because the hour, 45 minutes that they get for their lunchtime wasn't enough to wait in that line and get tested. So, whatever we could do to help facilitate that whole process and have it run smoothly would be appreciated. I know we're doing a lot. And I want to thank the CARES team and Daisy for all the work that they're doing because I know that they're working around the clock to make sure that those services are provided for our residents. And with that, I want to say good night.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Councilwoman Mendoza, should we come back to you? Did you find what you were looking for?
Yes, Mayor. I did find my talking points for the Orange County Sanitation District for the month of November. This month, the OC Sanitation District celebrated 13 outgoing board and alternate board members who collectively gave the sanitation district over 120 years of institutional knowledge and experience. The departing board members were integral part in helping the sanitation department become a worldwide leader in resource recovery. Their leadership and vision provided Orange County Sanitation District with the support necessary to accomplish efforts such as the groundwater replenishing system, the transfer of local sewers, relocation of the sobbing line, a critical infrastructure project that carries brine and industrial wastewater from the inland empire to Orange County Sanitation District and to so many others. Now, OCSC will now begin the onboarding process once the new members are appointed. And we also authorize a third party to provide the PFAAS, which you probably may know that it means the per and polyfluoralky substance. It's a sampling and analysis services to comply with State Water Resource Control Board Investigative Order that aims to understand the presence of PFAAS in the environment. It's very important that Santa Ana get in on the clean water and continue to provide high-quality water to its residents. And so, this is one of the areas where the public may not realize why all of this is going on. How does it affect our city? Well, with the Orange County Sanitation District working collectively with all of these, it's to ensure that we are all on the same page as far as providing safe groundwater to our respective residents and to ensure that our sewers and our water lines remain clean and that our cities are compliant with how to release and get rid of the fat and oils and grease that our businesses, our restaurants use. And so, that's one of the issues that we look at as a representative from the city council. And my duty is to report to you and to the public of the projects that are forthcoming so that we can also be at the forefront in these issues. So, that's the report for November of 2020.
Thank you for that. Now, let's continue with councilmembers. So, let's go ahead. And I believe Councilwoman Sarmiento, you are next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I wanted to do this with the city manager in the room. But maybe we can go ahead and have her, have some of the directors here go ahead and relay this to her. But I think what's important is that many of us right now are aware that we're going through this incredible spike in COVID positivity rates here in Santa Ana, really, you know, nationally and locally and regionally. But Santa Ana is disproportionately being impacted. I know that we've exceeded 330 deaths. You know, our positive cases now exceed 1,500. And there are some neighborhoods in the city that have a positivity rate of 20%. That is 1 in 5. So, it is a very, very scary moment, which only appears to be getting worse. So, we have the highest rate of positivity in the county. We have a very vulnerable demographic. By all accounts, I know our demographic is vulnerable because we have many people with underlying chronic health conditions. And we have, you know, a high Latino population that's being affected disproportionately throughout the state. Many of our workers are essential workers that find themselves out, you know, in the public, having to work, having to keep commerce going, and exposing themselves and then coming home and exposing their families. That many live in overcrowded conditions in neighborhoods that are very densely populated. So, I know I've had this conversation in the past with our staff and the city manager. And I was reminded today that it was brought to us as an 85A item, maybe a few months back, by, I believe, Councilmember Penyloza. But I think it's time for us to reconsider the item, which is to consider having an executive order by the city manager to do a mandatory mask order here for us. Because, you know, the intent, I think, when we spoke to the item originally was to, not to be punitive, not to be onerous, not to be harsh with any of members of our public, but if anything, to provide some sort of deterrent effect and allow for people to take this seriously. Because we still see many businesses, we still see many areas of congregation where people are, you know, grouped together very closely. They're spreading it amongst themselves. And we cannot open our businesses nor can we send our kids to school if these conditions continue to be present. So, for me, it is a matter of life and death. It is something that, we have other communities in the county that don't have rates as high as ours that have already done this, including Costa Mesa, Anaheim, and Fullerton. So, I would just, you know, have the city manager maybe look at this, consider where we stand and, you know, with respect to the other 33 cities in the county and realize that our rates are just very, very excessive right now. And we haven't even gotten as bad as we were going to be. We all knew that there was going to be a surge in, you know, in the winter and in the season. But the holidays are really just making it much, much more acute. So, to the extent that you consider that, Madam City Manager, you know, under your authority that you've been vested with by this council, I think that we need to look at that seriously. I did have a good conversation with the mayor. And I, you know, I kind of want to pivot to that. But, you know, hopefully, you know, members of this council will take a look at that and consider it and maybe get back to you later. We didn't have an opportunity to put it on as an 85A item because the numbers really did start spiking post, the post-holidays. So, in any event, I, you know, I do want to, you know, kind of shift over to my conversations with the mayor and share sort of what we spoke about, which is our, you know, our mutual concern for handing the council over and transitioning. And I want to thank him for making this transition as smooth as could be. But obviously, one of the things that we spoke about, and I think the item that takes most of our attention is really dealing with this, with the pandemic and the consequences to our city and the economic crisis that will follow and that we're living through right now. That being said, I know that this is, you know, a pretty historic meeting, at least, you know, in my books. This is the last full meeting that, you know, the mayor will have chaired. And I want to thank him, as well as the other councilmembers, for their service. I know that we probably won't even be able to be physically together again as we are colleagues right now. So, I do want to thank them. But I want to take a moment to thank their families. Because I know personally that the privilege that we have to serve the public and to meet the demands that we all have are given to us by our families. We really do this at their expense. And they are the ones who sacrifice. They are the ones who put up with us during some very difficult moments. And they have a lot of, you know, gratitude that we should bestow upon them. So, you know, I want to thank the families of Mayor Pulido, Councilmember Solario, and Mayor Protem Villegas. Because I think that all of us understand that we are forever connected by Santa Ana. And I think all of us have, you know, do this because we love the city. We love trying to improve the condition of people's lives. And, you know, we should never let that, you know, get past us. Because I know that there are moments when we've disagreed passionately. But I think one of the things that we can all agree on is that we do this because we have an incredible, deep concern with making sure that we do good work on behalf of the residents in Santa Ana that have given us and granted us this ability. So, I just want to, you know, take this moment because I know the moments will be very fleeting in the next week or so, in the next few days or so, to just say thank you. And I think it's important that we all recognize that, you know, whether it's, you know, four years, whether it's eight years, whether it's 26 years, you know, the service is very, very profound and very deep. And as a resident, you know, here, as a young man who came here as a recent arrival immigrant when I was a year old, I've known no other home but Santa Ana. And I've always thought that those who have held office, those who have run for office, you know, that is a noble pursuit. And I will always think that. And I want to thank staff for making our job easier as well. But I just wanted to say that because I know that, again, moments will become shorter and shorter to be able to just appreciate one another. And given where we are in the shadow of this pandemic, you know, life is very precious and life is very short. So, with that, I will bid you all a thank you and bid you all a good night.
Thank you for those kind words, councilmember. And I should say Mayor Sarmiento because in a few days, that will be your title. And I'm very proud of you. And I really look forward, not only to a smooth transition, but I'll speak more in a minute, you know, to continue to work together on behalf of the city. So, let me go to Mayor Protem Villegas, please.
Mr. Councilmember Solario?
Sorry, Councilman Solario. Sorry about that.
No, it's a big call. Oh, no.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very kind words by Councilman Sarmiento. I think you're going to do a great job as mayor. And we all look forward to working with you. I know we'll continue to serve the city because we all love the city. And we talked about that, you know, Mary likes Sarmiento. So, you know, I'll still be here and, you know, cheer you on all as you guys do good things. But I wish I know that you all will try to do great things for the people of the city. And also, the COVID thing, obviously, is party number one. And I want to thank staff for the excellent execution of this, you know, kind of neighborhood-based outreach that we're doing and COVID testing. And I think that community's been responding well to that and the time with the census was, you know, fantastic. And so, just keep pushing that out and, you know, getting out as many of those dollars as possible before, you know, the state of the feds wants to stop letting them use those dollars. So, good job on that. And, you know, we'll continue to stay in touch. And good night, everybody.
Thank you for that. Mayor Protem Villegas, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you could give me a little bit of leeway, I want to take my time addressing the public.
Take your time, as much time as you like. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Addressing the public on my last four years, and this is the last time I'll be able to make councilmember comments. And, you know, to the residents of Santa Ana and to everyone who can hear my voice, it has been an honor and a pleasure to serve you. And this seat belongs to the public. And we don't own it. It belongs to the public. So, we only serve in it. So, it was definitely a distinct honor to be here and serve you. My whole life has been about public service. And from the time that I raised my hand to join the US military and serve the United States Army as a combat medic, and then the time I raised my hand when I joined the Sheriff's Department 31 years ago, and then my third time when I raised my hand and was sworn in to the council, Santa Ana. So, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve as your councilmember, Mayor Protem. So it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve as your councilmember, Mayor Protem. In four years, I have never missed a meeting. I have never missed a council meeting. I am also on the Board of Directors for OCFA. I've only missed two meetings, not that I wanted to, but, you know, I've only missed two meetings down there, and I take this position very seriously. I'm very loyal to the cause. I believe in the work. That's why I'm here. It's like being in uniform at the sheriff or at FIRE. We believe in the work, and I bring that with me to this position here. And if, I would like to thank a few members. I know that our next meeting is going to, we're going to be passing on the baton, and I believe that a lot of the attention should be put on the new councilmembers that are going to be joining. So I would like to take this moment to thank my commissioners. I'll start off with my planning commissioner, Cynthia Contreras-Lio, and then Christopher Leo, who serves as my Measure X Committee member, Ophi Valardi-Garcia for the Parks and Recs, Tim Rush, historic commissioner, Jim Perez from Community Development Commissioner, Mike Gonzalez on the E-TAC, Stephanie Najera from the Personnel Board, also a PIO for the city of Testan, and Jessica Chaw, Arts and Culture Commissioner, and my youth commissioners, you know, past and present, José Acevedo, Marlene Butron, and Andres Medina. Also, Angie Conna was my former Community Housing Commissioner. Also, I had the pleasure of working with Gerardo Moet, longtime employee here at the city, and Raul Godínus, former city manager, Maria Wezar, our clerk, Robert Cortez, our former deputy city manager. And then we have the current city manager's office staff. And Christine, I want to say, you know, I was glad and I'm very thankful that I was part of you coming here to this city, voting, fighting for you to be here, one of the greatest city managers that I know, Sonia Carvalho, who I also, I call Lady Justice, and your great staff, and some of the great lawyers that work in your office that I had the pleasure of working with, John Funk, Laura Rosini, Tamara Magozian. I also like to thank our clerk, Daisy Gomez, for all of her hard work, and we also have Norma, right there to your side, Mider, who I've known for a long time, and Stephen Mendoza, also served as our assistant city manager, and Nabil Saba, Min Thai, Stephen Pham, Catherine Downs, Lisa Rudolph, Brian Sternberg, Jack Shula, and I also see Chief Valentine here in the audience, Chief Henry. It is my distinct honor to be serving by your side. Believe me, for me, the people in uniform, and it's a special place in my heart because I wear a uniform too. Got Sammy Soto in there, supervisor of OCFA Dispatch, longtime, 30-year employee, correct? 30-year employee, serving the residents of Orange County. It is just an honor to be with you, and, you know, like I said, just to be here. When I first ran for office, I prayed, and I asked God, if you allow me one term, I'll be happy, and he granted me that wish. So who am I to complain? You know, this is great. I think it's great. And a couple of other folks, also, Yesenia Cruz, my executive assistant, my right hand, the one who kept me out of trouble, the one who helped me every day, and all of the great staff, Madam City Manager, all of your staff up there helping all of us to make sure that we do our work. Rosa Flores, Daniel Soto, our PIO, Paul Ekins, Daisy Perez, Nicole Houston, Angie Morris. I also want to recognize Scott Cutner for 30 years, and he'll be retiring, and Ron Ohno, 51 years at the city of Santa Ana. Wow. And he was there when they built that Japanese pagoda over there, and I used to, 31 years ago, I was protecting it as that was my, I started in this civic center when they started with the sheriffs. So there's a lot of highlights. Going to Washington, D.C., three times to advocate for funds for our EOC, our Emergency Operations Center, for my family justice center, for our family justice center, I should say, and for the, you know, meeting the cops grants, you know, going down there and just advocating for more funds, going to the senator's office, Feinstein and Harris, our congressmembers, you know, a few of them actually visiting them, and, you know, I remember when I got here, I took two weeks off to be at City Hall and introduce myself to every city employee so I know who they were and thanked them for their service, and I had an open-door policy, first one to institute that. So I'm very proud of that. And I've written letters for DACA, I've written for parents, letters to our president about the parents of DACA recipients, and talked about immigration reform, the asking them to lift the government shutdown, so many things. I mean, I could go on for a while, and it's just, you know, it's being in this seat, you can do a lot of good. Unfortunately, it's politics, and there's a lot of, you know, this and that going on. But it was a great ride, and I won't say goodbye. I'll say till we meet again. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I first want to begin with a question to Mayor-elect Sarmiento. I believe that right now, the pandemic is unfortunately entering a new phase. I think what we've had to date has been a lot of pain and suffering. It's been absolutely awful. We're all tired of it. We want it to go away, but right now, we have to bat down the hatches. Right now, we're about to get hit by a tsunami. I was on a call yesterday with Mark Gally, the, you know, state public health official, and he was asking us to do everything we absolutely can do. And I know it takes five votes to waive the Brown Act and to bring something on an emergency basis, but right now, I think we have an emergency basis. If we don't act quickly, you know, there'll be an installation on December 8th, and after that, there'll be, you know, Christmas, and then by the time a new council gets going, it's going to be some time. So, you know, Mayor-elect Sarmiento, if you're up for it, and I'd like to invite my fellow councilmembers, I think we ought to consider right now an emergency resolution. We need five votes in order to waive the Brown Act, and then what I want to do is I want to bring back today, right now, that action to make masks mandatory in the city. We have 15,000 people right now that are infected, 330 that have died. I'm telling you, we need to do absolutely everything we can. The $28 million that I was fortunate to work with the big city mayors and bring to the city, that money's about to run out, and we won't be able to do anything in a few days. We'll have to even stop the testing, and masks are about one of the few things that we have to protect us right now. And when you look at Santa Ana being the fourth densest city in the country, you know, we are a tumbleweed. And look, we've been doing a lot, a lot, to try to slow this pandemic down. You know, staff has really taken this on, you know, from, you know, the city manager, you know, to Daisy, to Abro and all of code enforcement, and PD, and everybody. We've saved already thousands of lives, but I'm telling you, things are about to get much worse. Unfortunately, you know, we're not an island. We're part of a much bigger situation, and the pandemic is alive and well. With the positivity rate that we have in parts of the city, you know, 20% can become 40%, and 15,000 people infected can become 50,000 people infected, and 330 deaths can be over 1,000 deaths. And so I would like to, again, if you're so willing, you know, Mayor-elect, because I know we've been talking about this, I'd like for us to consider a resolution to waive the Brown Act in order to come back and be able to take action because I do think, unfortunately, this is an emergency. This is worse than it was, you know, two weeks ago, or a month ago, or two months ago. Right now, if you could hear the fear in Secretary Gally's voice, you know, he is scared by what's about to hit us. So I think this is not the time to be tired. This is not the time to be fatigued by, you know, just this constant pain that the pandemic is and all the damage that it's already caused our community. This is a time to get stronger. It's a time to rise up, and it's a time to say, look, we should have done it earlier. And I know, you know, Councilman Peñalosa brought it up. At the time, it was a different time. I, myself, you know, am at fault because I said, okay, you know, the state's already doing it, why do we need to do it? Well, we need to do it just because we need to do absolutely everything we can. So I have more things to say, but, you know, first, you know, can I get a motion to waive, you know, the Brown Act? Again, we need five votes to do this, and then I would come right back with the motion that, you know, Mayor-elect or Councilor Sarmiento was discussing and Councilor Becerra was discussing, which is to make masks mandatory here in the city. I really think that's the right thing to do. So is there any support for that? Can I get such a motion, please?
Well, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Sarmiento. Thank you for those words, and I think, you know, I hope it's possible that we can do this amongst our colleagues. I see the city manager nodding her head, but I think this would be a really good testament, legacy moment for you to transition this to, you know, this incoming council as one of your last acts as mayor. I really do think it speaks well of how involved you've been in this effort and how serious you've taken this matter, and so I think it does speak well of your time as mayor here, knowing that you are going to be now sort of relieving yourself of this responsibility, but nonetheless, making a very strong act to make sure that you protect the residents that you've represented for so many years. So I would...
So if that's a motion, I'll accept it. Is there a second?
Second, I'm Mendoza.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solario?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Villegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Pulido?
Yes. Thank you for that, councilmembers. And again, especially Councilor Sarmiento, and I really want to say Mayor Sarmiento because we've been talking so much about just how dangerous this is and how, I know we're going to keep working together to, you know, continue to protect the community. So having said that, Madam City Attorney, what would the right language be to make masks mandatory? Do we have, you know, a statement or something that might be in order that we can adopt right now, please?
Mayor, Mayor, and councilmembers, now that you've added the item as a new item under the Brown Act, you could give direction to staff. The city manager still has her emergency powers under the executive authority you gave her in the emergency resolution, so that's one method to do it, and then we could come back at a future meeting and have a more formalized resolution or even an ordinance, uncodified ordinance, if that's something that you would want to do. But she can take that action with direction from the council.
I would like that my colleagues allow me to make such a motion that we, you know, move to allow the city manager, under her powers, to make, you know, take an executive action and make a mask mandatory. And I would like to add to that motion that, you know, she do, and of course, all of you do everything you can, and let me just add one thought. The county right now has, you know, saliva testing, but we need to make it really available to the people here in the city because they rolled it out, but it's very slow, it's very difficult. We need to figure out how is it really going to help our citizens and our constituents? Because I'm telling you, you know, nobody's going to save us. We have to save ourselves, and this cloud is getting dark very fast, and the county does have resources, and we have to push them. So it's the mask, but it's also saliva testing, anything else we can do, but the executive order immediately is to bring the masks about. So with that, can I get a second to that motion, please?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Becerra. And think, and well, I'll say a few more thank yous here in a moment, but thank all of you for everything that you do because I know this is not an easy job, especially when we have something like COVID around us. So we have a motion and second. Any other comments by councilmembers, please?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Peñalosa, just a quick one.
Yes, please. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. I just want to emphasize that we got to make sure that we advertise this everywhere we can, emergency signs that we have during construction, the ones advertising the COVID testing, and social media everywhere we possibly can so that the community knows that, you know, that there will be consequences if you're not out in public wearing a mask, and that's basically it. Just want to make sure that we stress that with the community. But again, as...
Thank you, by the way, and thank you for your work on the census. I know you worked very hard and kept putting a message out, and I believe you made a difference. I know we didn't count everybody when you wanted to, but I believe you made a difference, and here we have to do the same thing. We definitely have to push very hard to communicate to everybody. Other comments, councilmembers, please? Seeing no other comments, let's have a roll call vote, if I may. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solario?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Villegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Pulido?
Yes. Yes. Thank you for that. The other thing I want to say is that, look, you know, the pandemic kind of is ruining a lot of things for a lot of us. You know, for me, it's ruining, you know, probably a big exit party with a whole lot of friends for, you know, since 1988, when I came on to the city council. And actually, if I'm wrong with that, it was '86, and I began serving right there, December of '86, on a '87. Anyway, it's been 34 years. There are just way too many people to thank, too many stories to tell. I know that for those of you that are interested, I'm going to be doing stuff with Cal State Fullerton in the Oral History Department. There's also video that the staff has put together here, and there's one at OCFA, and I'm doing stuff with the big city mayors and the Orange County mayors, and we're going to be doing a lot of stuff to commemorate things in the future. But I just want you all to know, you know, how much I've enjoyed working with each and every single one of you, and I want to, you know, commend in particular Councilmember Sarmiento because he talked about our families, and this is such a toll on families, you know, not only your spouses and your friends, but especially the children. I mean, you know, all the criticism and all the nonsense that comes with the territory, they have to deal with it all. But ultimately, you know, we do this because we care, we do it because we think we can make a difference, we do it because we think we can, you know, make a better world and a better future. So I'll have more words to say on December 8th, but again, I want to thank you all, in particular, our city staff, you know, Christine, Sonia, Daisy, you know, the chiefs, the fire chiefs... chief, you know, all the different public works people, you know, parks and recs, you know, libraries, you know, there's so many, so many folks that I've had the privilege of working with over the years. So, you know, 34 years is a long time. When I first came, I never thought it'd be anywhere more than eight years. I was ready to leave at eight years, and Dan Young said, you've got to be the next mayor. And then every year's been a different year. The city has progressed a lot in those years, and I know I'm leaving it in good hands. So with that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting tonight, and then we'll re-convene again on December 8th. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.